Microphone, microphone test, sound test. Microphone test, yes. Microphone test. Microphone test. Microphone test.
Well, good morning, everyone. We are going to get started.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Good morning, El Paso. Good morning, City Council. Ms. Fryn, we're ready to go to work.
Good morning. If anyone will please take their seats, the meeting can be, get started. Good morning. This is a meeting of the El Paso City Council for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Mayor Johnson is present and presiding in council chambers along with Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, Representative Acevedo, Representative Malonado Rocha, Representative Boyatrejo, Representative Niño, alternate Mayor Pro Tem Fierro, and Representative Limón. It is 9:02 a.m. Will everyone please silence their electronic devices so as not to disturb the meeting? And rise for the invocation delivered by El Paso Police Chaplain, Rabbi Levi Greenberg.
Good morning. I brought my own today, so I'll start off with an act of charity. Sovereign of the world, look favorably upon the mayor and the members of the city council and all of us gathered here today, and bestow upon us all the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city with the wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. This is not only a civic responsibility, but also a holy endeavor. Our tradition teaches of seven universal laws given to mankind by God through Noah, including the instruction to foster a moral society governed by law. These laws also include the importance of serving God alone, respecting God's name, and the prohibitions against murder, theft, adultery, and cruelty against all living creatures. Grant us all the wisdom to appreciate your kindness in gifting us a new day with new opportunities to bring more goodness and kindness to our world. After Passover, the festival of redemption, there is a Jewish tradition to count the days until the anniversary of the revelation at Sinai, which occurred seven weeks after the Exodus. After the Israelites were granted their freedom, they joyfully counted down the days until they would be told of their responsibilities at Sinai, how they would play an integral part in perfecting our universe together with all that exists. We count the days to express the fact that every day is truly valuable. Time is our most precious commodity, and it is up to us to make every moment count, to utilize our time to bring healing and joy to others, thereby bringing peace and tranquility to ourselves and the entire world. Almighty God, give this honorable council guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. May our cities serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life, and let us say amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. And this morning, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have students from Congressman Silvestre and Catalina Reyes Elementary at the invitation of Mayor Pro Tem Chavez. We have Ivana Vong, Giovanna Vong, Malakai Borgas, Luciana Edmonds Torrentino, Maylee Smith, Jaden Webster, Ian Rubio, Marlon Lawrence, Jack Young, and Mika Dominguez.
All right, and let's go on with the two rows. We'll do one row at a time, so if you're a little short, come to the front there, please. There we go, perfect. Three, okay. And then our front row just take a step back for me a little bit. Okay. Great, and then help me take a little step over right here for me, please. And I'll have you coming around over here for me, please. All right, ready, big smiles everybody, and then everyone get together and go. There we go, that looks great. All right, ready, one, two, three. A lot of fans, so we're going to get some heat, too.
What a treat it was to have Congressman Silvestre Reyes and Catalina Reyes Elementary here this morning. And also, they got a Mayor's Challenge coin, so they're part of my teams of excellence. So we want to thank them for coming out. That was a real treat. Ms. Fryn, our proclamations?
Yes, sir. For those of you receiving a proclamation, your group will have up to six minutes collectively to speak at the podium. That brings us to the Mayor's Proclamations. The first proclamation this morning is National Police Week.
Representative Niño?
Thank you, Mayor. If we could have the police department come up forward, please. So proclamation for the city of El Paso, Texas. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including 2,106 from the state of Texas. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial for officers killed in previous years engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas by joint resolution approved on October 1st, 1962, Congress authorized and President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th of each year Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, further designating the calendar week in which May 15th falls as Police Week. And whereas in the city of El Paso, Texas, and every American community, law enforcement officers with the El Paso Police Department are committed to the preservation of life, property, risking their lives to protect us from those who would defy the law, providing law and order and service the cause of justice. And whereas the city of El Paso and the state of Texas honor the heroism of our law enforcement officers, especially those who have given their lives so that others might live, asking God's blessings for the family and friends they left behind. And whereas in the 152-year history of the El Paso Police Department, 35 officers have lost their lives in the line of duty, paying the ultimate sacrifice while serving and protecting the El Paso community. And whereas in the city of El Paso, Texas, during Police Week, the nation's flags will be flown at half-staff on Peace Officers Memorial Day under Public Law 103-322 as amended. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council of the city of El Paso, Texas, that the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025 shall be known as National Police Week, and that May 15th, 2025 shall be known as El Paso Police Officers Memorial Day, signed by the Honorable Mayor Renard Johnson. Thank you.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for this proclamation. Not just for the police department, more importantly, for the 35 families that gave the ultimate sacrifice. Those families didn't know that their officer was never going to return home that night. They knew the risk that their officers were involved in. The officers know the risks every day by putting on the uniform and going out there to serve our community. All their tomorrows were given up for the community of El Paso, 35 families since the inception of our 152-year history. It's no coincidence that Memorial Day for police officers and the military is also the same month as Mother's, as Mother's Day. The example of sacrifice and the willingness to give up oneself for somebody else. The US military guaranteed the freedoms that we live under the US Constitution. But it's the police officer that goes out every single day and serves under the Constitution to make sure people are able to live their lives in liberty and freedom and enjoy what this country offers them. Cannot say enough about the officers that every day they go out. They don't get to pick the call. The call picks them out there. They don't know what they're facing. We have incredible individuals that go out every single day and serve this community. And that's not just the men and women in the uniform. It's our civilian staff, too. I don't want to take up too much time because I would like our funeral committee that puts all this together to talk about the things that are happening this week to honor our fallen officers and all officers across the United States that have given their ultimate sacrifice. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Lynn Picard.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
So like Chief was saying, we do have a couple of events that we have this week that we honor our fallen. It started off yesterday. We did do graveyards cleanup at the cemetery to make sure that their gravesites are always looking nice and sharp. And that's just some small token that we can do for the families. And also today, we're here at the proclamation. And then also on Friday, we have the memorial, police memorial, which is going to be out in northeast at Chuck Henrich Park. It's off of John Cunningham and Officer Andrew Barceno. And you guys are all welcome to attend. It's open to the public. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Sergeant Atiyah, President of the El Paso Municipal Police Officers Association. I want to thank you all for taking the time this morning to honor, like the chief said, not only our fallen officers, but their families. The families and the community are the ones that have to endure the pain and the sorority every single day, not just the week or the day of the memorials that are set. Yes, we put up memorials, we put up placards, we put up their names on a wall. So we come together once a year as a family in blue, but it's the family that they left behind that we need to think about each and every day because those are the families that gave their sons, their daughters, all across this country and this city and this county so that we could be free. So for that, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor and Council, I'd like our funeral committee and all those involved in these events to introduce themselves for public record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. Sergeant Acuna, oversee the funeral committee and the honor guard of this department.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. Officer David Amparan, chairman for the El Paso Police Department Funeral Committee.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Assistant Chief Briones. I also have the honor to work with the funeral committee. They do an awesome job, so we're very blessed. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Executive Chief Victor Serrido. I want to thank council and leadership for all their support and the hard work done by the funeral committee. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cynthia Iñaga. I am a funeral committee board member.
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for the support. My name is Astrid Mann. I'm a funeral committee board member for the El Paso Police Department.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for this recognition. We appreciate it.
And Chief, before you guys leave, we just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And we understand the sacrifice that you guys take every day by just putting on that uniform and representing this community. To know that you may not come home once you put on the uniform in the morning and when you go out to do the service that you do, we cannot thank you guys enough because it is a job that most of us will never ever understand or know what you guys do. But we thank you. Your community thanks you. You have kept this community very, very safe for many, many years. And we are very honored to have the National Police Week here today in your recognition. And for all the fallen officers across, not only El Paso, but across the country, please know that our thoughts and prayers are with the families.
Thank you. And I know every single officer on the department would say that all of you and every person in this community is worth the sacrifice and the work they do.
Wow. Thank you so much, Chief.
Is it a pusher or pull? Is it a... And then the crookedness of the...
Yeah, I couldn't find him either.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, that works. All right, big smiles right over here. Ready, one, two, three. Couple more, just in case. All right, ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Three. Thank you so much.
And the next proclamation is Coach Tony Harper Day.
Representative Limón?
Thank you, Mayor. If Coach Harper and his family and friends and Spanky, principal, any of the other staff members, students. Good morning. This is a proclamation of the city of El Paso. Whereas Coach Tony Harper, a distinguished figure in high school basketball, began his coaching career at the young age of 22 and has since amassed an extraordinary 1,159 victories over the course of his brilliant career. And whereas Coach Harper has dedicated the last 11 years to Cathedral High School, competing in the Texas Association of Private and Parochial Schools Division, where he has been a mentor, leader, and inspiration to countless student athletes. And whereas a proud graduate of the University of Texas El Paso and a protege of legendary coach Don Haskins, Coach Harper has not only brought technical skill to the game, but also instilled in his players values of perseverance, teamwork, and sportsmanship. And whereas over his esteemed career, Coach Harper has made significant contributions to multiple schools in our community, including Burgess High School, El Paso High School, Montwood High School, and Cathedral High School, leading Montwood to the Region 158 Title Game in 2006 and Cathedral to the TAPS Final Four in 2014. And whereas Coach Harper's legacy includes coaching his sons, Jason and Gregory, as well as mentoring Division One athletes such as Roman Martinez at the University of New Mexico, Nathan Hitchcock, US Army, and Mark McCall at UTEP. And whereas Coach Harper's dedication to an individual player development and his ability to inspire and believe in his athletes has left a lasting impact, as expressed by Cathedral sophomore guard Julián Escalante, who said, "He was the first person to believe in me from a basketball perspective." And whereas now entering retirement, Coach Harper looks forward to spending cherished time with his beloved wife and lifelong partner, Andre, while leaving behind a proud and lasting legacy of athletic excellence and mentorship. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso that Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 shall be known as Coach Tony Harper Day, signed by the Honorable Mayor Renard Johnson. Congratulations, Coach.
Good morning, Coach.
Well, you need a lot of help to go through all this stuff. And standing beside me is my wife, camera person, cook, baker, everything you can want, and always, always there to give me the impetus to be a guide to kids in school so they'll come out better than they went in. And we have a couple of players right here. We have... We have...
Come on up, introduce.
This is Diego.
Patricio.
This is Patricio.
Good morning, guys.
I think the other kids are getting ready to take a test, so, you know. Yeah, and then with us today is our principal, Mr. Edilfonso.
Sanchez.
Adolfo Sanchez, thank you. And good morning.
Good morning.
Our Assistant Principal, Mr. Carlos Puertas.
How you doing, Carlos Puertas, Athletic Director?
Good morning.
And a person who played for me and was a very good basketball player, an ex-Burgess Mustang, and I still stay in contact with him to this very day, Mr. Joe Rosales.
Joe.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers, Joe Rosales.
Good morning.
Back in the back is my youngest son. I wish he was that big when we played. He was a very good player, excellent student. He worked for the paper for a long time, and he's a great guy to have around, still my number one, Jason Harper.
Hey, Jase.
Oh, sure. Joe wants to say something.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Rosales.
You don't know the importance, or maybe, maybe people do know, how important role models are aside from your parents. And I played basketball my life. My eighth grade year, ninth grade year, I still remember, I went through a really bad injury at MacArthur High School. And I, it was just something between me and the coach. I was always very respectful, but the coach kind of took it out of me. I had an injury, almost lost my leg, and then my dad got all over him, so he wouldn't play me, and he took my confidence like you can't imagine. And I remember one day, Coach Harper comes from Burgess High School, and we just finished a game, and I was very low on my confidence, and he said, "Don't worry, son, you will be a player, and you will play for me." And it lifted me up like you can't imagine. And this is the man that I know to this day. If he tells me to go run a baseline right now, I'll run a baseline. And it just, the love that I have for Coach, the strict Coach, the great Coach that he was, and I played for another good Coach, Dolan Richardson, we were national champs. This Coach could have gone as far as he wanted to, not just high school ball, I'm sure he could have won several national championships in college. But it's just an honor to be able, to be part of his life, and the molding and the values and morals, and he was part of my success, and his lovely wife too, who's always been by his side. And this is great that you guys are honoring him, Lily, Mayor, I really appreciate that, and thank you so much, Coach, for everything you've done for me personally and all the other kids that you've coached.
Yes, I'm Andre Harper, and I just want to thank all of you, City Council, Mayor, for this honor. We have been blessed to live in El Paso. We could have gone other places, but there are many, many reasons a person should live in El Paso. This is a wonderful city. Thanks for your direction, and thank you for this honor.
You're very welcome.
And I'll leave you with one thing. It's been with me for my entire life, and before every game, my wife writes up individual things that happen in that, that might happen in that game tonight or whatever, and she is the one that keeps me going in the right direction. It goes like this. Life's battles don't always go to the stronger, faster man, but sooner or later, the man who wins is the man who thinks he can. And I've carried that with me for 57 years, so that's how long we've been at it, and we're still trying. Thank you very much. I appreciate City, Councilpeople, and all who are involved with basketball at El Paso, and just a big thank you, and especially to these two gentlemen back here who gave me a chance to be a coach at Good Lido High School too. It was a blast. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Representative Vasaveto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say something to Coach Harper. Coach Harper, it's an incredible legacy that you've had at many different schools, and part of that legacy was at El Paso High, and my uncle was on your team. He graduated in 1988 from El Paso High, and he still talks to you to this day, talks about you to this day. So you really have left an impact on him, and I'm sure many, many others, so thank you for everything you've done to our community, for our community.
Yeah, and Coach, it's not often we have legends that are inside City Council chambers, and I have heard so many stories about you and your coaching career. And it stands today, though, I mean, you've got, you've got Joe Rosales ready to do a baseline, so I kind of wanted to see that this morning, but I've got to tell you, you know, you say you're going to retire, but I don't know coaches that retire. And one of the things that you did today that I know you've done for your entire coaching career is you've always put the team before you. You started off by acknowledging your lovely wife, then you went through some of the players and your son, and then you went through some of your team members, so you're always going to be coach, and you're always going to be El Paso's coach, so thank you for all that you've done for this city.
Just remember one thing, not a lot of highs, not a lot of lows, just nice and easy all the way. Never be in a situation where you put yourself in all kinds of trouble. Be a helper and be the kind of person, especially if you're a dad, that you'd like your kids to be.
Thanks. Thank you, Coach.
And for the record, Representative Canales has joined the meeting at 9:26.
Yes, you guys look great. All right. Yes, that looks good. All right, big smiles, ready, one, two, three. Couple more. Okay, a few more. Smiles, one, two, three. A few more. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Ms. Prime.
Yes, sir, the next proclamation is International Internal Audit Awareness Month. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas internal auditing is a vital part of strengthening organizations and protecting stakeholders of both the public and private sectors, and whereas internal auditing helps identify and manage the organization's risks and ensure policies, procedures, and controls are in place and working appropriately. And whereas internal auditing is an increasingly sophisticated and complex activity requiring specialized knowledge, training, and education. And whereas internal auditing is an established profession with a globally recognized code of ethics and international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. And whereas the Institute of Internal Auditors, the internal audit profession's most widely recognized advocate, educator, and provider of standards, guidance, and certifications, celebrates its 84th anniversary in 2025. And whereas historically, the global internal audit profession promotes awareness about its value during the month of May each year. And whereas the contribution of internal auditors to the success of organizations and the global economy at large deserves our recognition and commendations. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the City of El Paso, extending greetings and best wishes to all observing International Internal Audit Awareness Month, we congratulate the Institute of Internal Auditors, IIA, on its 84th anniversary and the IIA El Paso Chapter on its 46th anniversary. We also invite the citizens of El Paso to join in recognizing professional internal auditors for their contribution. The month of May 2025 shall be known as International Internal Audit Awareness Month, signed by our Honorable Mayor, Renard Johnson."
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and Councilmembers. My name is Nubie Galván, and I am the Vice President of the Institute of Internal Auditors El Paso Chapter. On behalf of our chapter, I would like to sincerely thank the County of El Paso, sorry, the City of El Paso for the proclamation, recognizing May as Internal Audit Awareness Month. At this time, I would like to introduce our advocacy officer, Julie Franco, to share a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. The IIA is a global voice, recognized authority, and leading advocate for the internal audit profession. Our local chapter proudly serves the El Paso, Texas, and Las Cruces, New Mexico region. We have a total of 150 supporting members, with which 56 are certified internal auditors. Our members work across internal auditing, risk management, governance, IT audit, and related fields, helping to strengthen transparency and accountability in both public and private organizations. From July through May, we offer valuable training, education, and networking opportunities from our members, while giving back to our community by partnering with local charities and organizations. We deeply appreciate your support and recognition, which helps elevate the vital work internal auditors do in safeguarding public trust and strengthening organizational integrity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You want to introduce the rest of the team?
Good morning, City Council, Mayor.
Good morning.
Christian Castro, Auditor for the City of El Paso.
Good morning, Esmeralda Herrera, Auditor for the City of El Paso and Secretary for the IIA El Paso Chapter.
Good morning.
Good morning, Miguel Olivas, Auditor for the City of El Paso.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Sergio Carrillo, Auditor, City of El Paso.
Good morning, good morning. And congratulations to you guys, I mean, you're not acting like auditors, you guys are being very shy here today. But again, thank you for all the awareness and all the hard work that you guys do on a day-to-day basis. We know it's not easy, and we know it's a field that needs a lot more awareness to it. And how many members did you say were?
150.
150, wow, and growing, right?
Yes.
Good, that is good. So, but thank you guys for the very hard work and detail work that you do for a number of companies, for the city, for the county, for everyone that you work for, but thank you guys for all that you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And the final proclamation this morning is Mayor Walter Miller Day.
Representative Fier.
Thank you, Mayor. Last but not least. Yes, absolutely. Whereas our friend, our mentor, Walter L. Miller, I probably called him Walter two other times, so it's an honor to even call you Walter, has faithfully served the residents of Horizon City since 1998, beginning his public service on the Town's Board of Adjustment and being elected to Horizon City Council in 2000. Whereas Mr. Miller's deep commitment to his community led his election as mayor in 2007, a role in which he served with distinction and guided Horizon City through a period of transformation, growth, and development. Whereas under Mr. Miller's leadership, Horizon City's population grew over 300% from approximately 5,551 residents to 2000, in 2000, over 24,168 residents. Reflecting his effective governance, strategic vision for the city's expansion, and whereas Mr. Miller played a key role in establishing the Horizon City Economic Development Corporation, fostering a foundation for new business opportunities, job creations, and long-term economic investments in the region. Whereas his impact extended beyond municipal boundaries and through nearly three decades in the environmental consulting field, and through his service on the El Paso Chamber Board of Directors, the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization, where his leadership helped advocate regional mobility, infrastructure planning, and economic development across the El Paso area. Whereas following his tenure as mayor, Mr. Miller continued to serve the community as Place One Alderman, providing continued leadership, demonstrating an enduring dedication to public service, and whereas in recognition of his outstanding contributions to local government and regional development, the Texas Senate adopted Senate Resolution Number 415 on April 16th, 2025, congratulating Mr. Miller on his retirement and honoring his legacy of service. Whereas Walter L. Miller's career exemplifies the profound lasting impact of dedicated local leadership in strengthening communities, fostering civic engagement, and improving public life for generations to come. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the City of El Paso on May 13th, 2025, shall be known as Walter L. Miller Day, signed by the Honorable Renard, Mayor Renard Johnson. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Well.
Mayor, Council, I certainly thank you for this award, this recognition. It's been, I've had a really good run in the community. One of the many things, I guess, I've learned over the years is things happen a lot better when there are, there is cooperation and understanding instead of conflict. And I've found that on the various boards, it's easier to find the middle ground, it works out better, and that's what I've, what Horizon has become, is we understand how to work with our community, how to work with our neighbors, and do what's best for the folks that live here in our community. So thank you for this. I'm not, I don't particularly enjoy public speaking, so I'm usually very brief at this. So thank you again, and I appreciate the honor.
Thank you. And Mayor, before you leave, I just learned today your name was Walter. I mean, I've called you Mayor for many, many, many years, and I've had the pleasure of working with you on a And I know you're not going to be able to retire, because you're always going to have your finger into something, but we want to congratulate you and honor you today, and have Walter Miller Day. And you will always be a mayor, and it's been a pleasure to serve alongside of you, and I look forward to that next chapter of what you've got cooking that you're not telling everybody, but we thank you for all your service and everything that you've done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Prime.
Yes, Mayor. Council, per the rules of order, no use of personal cellular devices, no personal communication should take place on the dais while the meeting is in session. Once you obtain the floor from the mayor, you will have up to ten minutes for debate and may speak twice per item. Please speak into the microphone and refrain from side conversations at the dais while the meeting is in session. Mayor, would you like to go to item one?
Yes, please.
And sir, there's a related item on the agenda. I don't know if you want me to also read that one into the record?
Please.
Okay. Item one is discussion and action on a resolution adopting the rules of order for city council meetings to take effect on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Item twenty-four is discussion and action to allow for a public comment on all agenda items, as they are heard during the meeting, with a three-minute time limit on each item. This item was submitted by Representative Limón.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to item one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to have some discussion. Ms. Neiman, you have a?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and Council, Carla Neiman for the record. Can I pull up the presentation, please? So, Council, I just wanted to take an opportunity to go through the presentation for the council. It's intended to provide a notice to the public in terms of the changes that the council approved this past week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, and then give you all an opportunity to ask any more questions or clarification if necessary. So, these are the highlights of the revisions that the council made. So, it was intended to be an update to the rules of order to streamline the council meetings. So, it updated the structure of the meeting, it updated the procedure for obtaining the floor for the council members, and then it combines both public comment and call to the public at ten AM. And then we have a new public comment conduct policy, and then these updates were recommended as a result of the meeting that took place on April twenty-ninth. So, here are the updated order of the meeting. You'll have the nine AM Pledge of Allegiance, you will have ceremonial items, which are all your proclamations or recognitions. Ten AM will be the official beginning of the meeting. It'll be with a roll call and the invocation. You will have public comment on all items that are on the consent agenda and then regular agenda items. Then you will immediately proceed to call to the public, which are items that are not on the agenda. Then you will proceed to consent, which is traditionally one vote of the council, and then the first reading of ordinances, which is also done by one vote of council. And then you will immediately proceed to the public hearings. Public hearings will continue to have their own public comment period, so if the public wants to speak on a public hearing, which is traditionally your zoning cases, as well as when the council sets their tax budget and their tax rate, those are public hearings, and also when you all are issuing debt, those are public hearings. So, those will still have separate public comment periods, not at ten AM. And then immediately thereafter, items that are moved to the forefront will be placed in that order, and then the council member requested items, any operational focus updates, regular agenda items, which are traditionally most of your resolutions, contracts, purchasing items, and then executive session. And then you have also stated that you will be taking a lunch break between twelve-thirty to one-thirty PM. The new amendment to Section twelve, obtaining the floor, specifically each member of council has a right to speak twice on the same motion. However, a member of council cannot speak the second time until everybody else that is signed up to speak. As council member speaks, at least one time before another member gets to speak a second time. No member can speak longer than ten minutes each time, and then only speak on the item that is the debatable motion. There are no time limits for members when you are conducting a special meeting of the council. That is up to the mayor and the council to decide if you want to hold yourself to any other time limits at that type of a meeting. And then as you all know, Ms. Prime is your parliamentarian, she will keep the time and notify the mayor if you spoke in your ten minutes. This is Section thirteen, right of citizens to be heard. Again, as I stated earlier, public comment is scheduled at ten AM for all consent and regular agenda items. Call to the public will begin immediately following public comment at ten AM. And then public comment on public hearings, as I stated earlier, will continue to occur when the item is heard. Section seventeen of your rules of order, time and the location of the meeting, this updates a separate resolution that council had, and it is now part of your rules of order. It is regarding virtual attendance by the council members. You have up until three months before the scheduled meeting to ask to speak or to attend a meeting virtually. Your deadline to notify the clerk's office is at noon on Wednesdays. Of course, there are opportunities when there is an emergency and you cannot attend a meeting. You have until five PM the day before a regular council meeting to notify the clerk's office that you need to amend virtually, and that allows the clerk to update by revision of the agenda that you will be attending virtually. Requests are granted on a first-come, first-served basis, and then no more than two members of council are allowed to appear virtually. And also, you cannot appear virtually on back-to-back meetings. Remember that you have to have your screen on at all times, and the public has to be able to see and hear you as part of the meeting. Anytime that you lose connection for a technical reason, or you purposely turn off your camera, you are considered absent from that portion of the meeting. I want to highlight the new Exhibit C that we added to the rules of order. Exhibit C is now an explanation of what the council's policy is when the public comes to speak, call to the public, or public comment, or when addressing the council. It provides the written policy that delineates what is appropriate conduct for members of the public who wish to speak. It provides definitions for what is considered disruptive or defamatory. The public is required to conduct themselves in the same courteous and civil manner that the council members are expected to display on the dais. The authority lies within the mayor's purview to call attention to a speaker who is not keeping within these rules. The mayor is allowed to give them a warning, for example, if they're spoken past their time, if they're not sticking to the topic at hand, if they're using abusive, offensive, defamatory language, obscene language, that is not permissible. And the mayor has the opportunity to tell them, I'm giving you a warning, you're not allowed to continue in that fashion. And then if they proceed down that path, the mayor can ask them to be escorted out of the room through the use of our law enforcement officers, and then they are banned for the rest of that meeting and that meeting only from participating in the meeting. However, they would be able to allow to return as long, if a future meeting, as long as they're not behaving in the same fashion that got them kicked out in the first place. Are there any questions?
Representative Canales.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be exceptionally clear about what's being proposed and what exactly it would look like during a meeting, because I've heard a lot of incorrect information over the last few days, a lot of misunderstanding of what the proposed changes are. So, Ms. Neiman, I'll ask you to just confirm these things. As I say, the public comment on agenda items beginning at ten AM will have no aggregate time limit, right? There can be an unlimited number of speakers at three minutes per speaker maximum, just as that has been in the past.
A public comment, yes, sir.
Public comment on items posted on the agenda.
Correct.
And then the council will hear call to the public, which, the same, speakers will have three minutes, just as they have, and there will be a sixty-minute aggregate time limit for that, just as there always has been.
That's correct, sir.
And so the only change being made is a move, is moving those periods for public comment to the beginning of the meeting.
That's correct.
And then the last option for public comment is public hearings, and in those, public comment will still be heard when the item is heard, because that's what state law requires.
That's correct, sir.
And so, none of the time limits have changed, or are being proposed to change?
Correct. The time limits are remaining the same, it's just now at ten AM.
And that's both the time limit for an individual speaker and time limits in aggregate for all of the speakers?
Correct.
Are exactly the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because there's been quite a lot of misunderstanding about that. I saw some reporting in media saying that everything was being limited to sixty minutes only, that if there was a controversial item, we would cut people off after twenty speakers. None of that is correct.
That is not correct. The sixty-minute time limit only applies to call to the public, and it has always been sixty minutes.
In your memory, since you've been at the city, do you ever recall us reaching the sixty-minute time limit on call to the public? I don't, since I have been here.
No, sir, I don't have, not to my knowledge, right now, I don't remember having call to the public.
We very frequently have many, many speakers on a particular agenda item.
That is public comment.
And that's public comment, which has no limit, and will continue to have no limit.
Correct.
You know, I've heard the concern that the impact of a comment is reduced if it isn't heard right before the vote, and I don't disagree with that. I think that effect is fairly slight. I personally would prefer to hear from constituents earlier in the process, because I think that plays much better into my decision-making about a particular item. But I understand that concern. I just think the trade-off, and it's a trade-off we discussed last meeting, is that this makes it more convenient for someone to come and give the comment in the morning at a predictable time. If they want to comment about five different items, and one is, you know, the first one is heard at ten AM, and the last one is heard at four PM, they're sitting around here all day waiting for their opportunity to speak for three minutes. And I see the value in making that predictable for them to speak at the start of the meeting, and then they can go on about their day. Again, we stream the meetings online, they're on YouTube, they're very easy to access, they can continue to watch, to understand how something turns out, but I think it makes a lot of sense to allow them to speak at the beginning of the meeting and to go on about their day after that. I also saw these proposed changes described as a restriction on citizen input, that was in, an opinion piece in local media characterized this as that, and I don't think this restricts anybody's ability to comment. People will still be able to speak about any number of items that they want to sign up for on the agenda. Again, as you confirmed at the beginning, there's no additional time limit, you'll have exactly the same amount of time and access that you always did. You'll simply be able to arrive early in the meeting and give the comments at a predictable time, and I see great benefit to that. I said two weeks ago, I'd be happy to try this, see how it works. I think if we see some dramatic drop-off in participation, which I don't think we'll see, I think we'll see the opposite, but if we see some dramatic drop-off in participation, we can always go back, but this will greatly help to run an efficient meeting and also to offer that predictable speaking time to the members of the public, so that they're not wasting their day sitting in the back of the room waiting for their chance. And so I just wanted to offer that opinion. I think, you know, it's disheartening sometimes when something is proposed, and then there's a whole lot of misinformation out there about what it actually means, what it actually is, and so I'd hope that we can consider making this change and monitoring how it works. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Representative Canales. Representative Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Rep. Canales kind of talking about the misinformation, because I also read an article in the paper yesterday that was saying that this would be limited to sixty minutes. So, Ms. Neiman, thank you for clarifying that. That was my understanding, what you said, that call to public is sixty minutes, the other one can be unlimited. And so I just really, whatever happens today, I just want to make sure that we're very clear on what this looks like moving forward, to not have confusion, because it kind of adds to the misinformation, and I feel like right now we also have to clarify that and do a little bit of overtime on clarifying what exactly these changes are. Overall, I think we had a very long discussion a few weeks ago, and I've been thinking about this a lot. There's been a lot of people that have been reaching out to me through email, through calls, constituents that have been concerned about this. So, I've been putting a lot of thought to this, and I understand where my colleagues are coming from with saying, you know what, this is a predictable time for people to show up, they're not here all day, but then there's also people that want to be here all day, or are really wanting to make sure that they feel impacted by what people are saying up here, right? Sometimes they come in and they say something, they're preparing some remarks that are going to be changed by the discussion that we have up here, or what a presentation comes up, when a presentation comes up by staff, they might infuse some of their commentary based on what they see on the item, so I also see the value there. And there's also those people that are here, and maybe they're speaking for others, right, that couldn't make it to the meeting, and because of X, Y, and Z happening in their lives. So, I just wanted to try and offer an amendment to kind of do a little bit of both on what is here. So, I want to move to include language in the rules of order for the El Paso City Council that allows the public to make the choice between speaking during the ten AM public comment period, or when the item comes up for discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Discussion on this item? No discussion? Okay, Ms. Prime, call for the vote on this amendment.
Yes, Mayor. So, the motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Representative Limón, and this is to amend the rules of order to allow the public a choice as to the time they would like to speak, whether it's at ten AM or when the item of interest is discussed. On that amendment, call for the vote.
And the voting session? And that motion passes five to three. Representatives Chavez-
uh, out there about what it actually means, what it actually is. Uh, and so I, I'd hope that, uh, we can consider making this change and, and monitoring how it works. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Representative Canales. Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate Rep. Canales kind of talking about the misinformation because I also read an article in the paper yesterday that was saying that this would be limited to 60 minutes. So, um, Ms. Nieman, thank you for clarifying that. That was my understanding, what you said, that call to the public is 60 minutes. The other one can be unlimited. And so I, I just really, whatever happens today, I just want to make sure that we're very clear on what this looks like moving forward to not have confusion, um, because it kind of adds to the misinformation. And I feel like right now we also have to clarify that and, and do a little bit of overtime on clarifying what exactly these changes are. Overall, I think we had a very long discussion, um, a few weeks ago. And I've been thinking about this a lot. There's been a lot of people that have been reaching out to me through email, through calls, um, constituents that have been concerned about this. So I, I've been putting a lot of thought to this and I, I understand where my colleagues are coming from with saying, you know what? This is a predictable time for people to show up. They're not here all day. But then there's also people that want to be here all day or are really wanting to, um, make sure that they feel impacted by what people are saying up here, right? Um, sometimes they come in and they say something, they're, they're preparing some remarks that are going to be changed by the discussion that we have up here or what a presentation comes up. Um, when a presentation comes up by staff, they might infuse some of their commentary based on what they see on the item. So I also see the, the value there. And there's also those people that are, are here and maybe they're speaking for others, right? That couldn't make it to the meeting and because of X, Y, and Z happening in their lives. So I, I just wanted to try and offer an amendment to kind of do a little bit of both on what, what is here. So I, I want to move to include language in the rules of order for the El Paso City Council that allows the public to make the choice between speaking during the 10:00 AM public comment period or when the item comes up for discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second discussion on this item? No discussion? Okay, Ms. Prime, call for the vote on this amendment.
Yes, Mayor. So the motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Representative Limon. And this is to amend the rules of order to allow the public a choice as to the time they would like to speak, whether it's at 10:00 AM or when the item of interest is discussed. On that amendment, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes 5 to 3. Representatives Chavez, Rocha, Fierro, Voringne, Representatives Acevedo, Trejo, Niño, Limon, Canales, Voringne. The motion carries.
Okay, we're back on the main motion. Representative Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, what, there was a lot of media that, that assumed what my intention was without even speaking to me. And there were a lot of, um, messages that I received, actually from both sides. I received a lot of messages from community members that were saying, "Thank you. We're tired of waiting all day." Um, and I just wanted to take the time to share because one of the things, and, and I may take up all 10 minutes here, so I apologize. But El Paso has always led by example. The law that changed back in 2019 is the very first time that public comment became part of these meetings. As long as I can remember, El Paso has always included public comment, but it was not always okay. So when that '86 legislature came and they passed that on the, I believe it was the Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Act, is that correct, Ms. Nieman? So, um, when that passed, that allowed for public comment in these spaces. But it was not a requirement prior to that. So in my opinion, El Paso has always been the leader in allowing the public to be part of the local government, to have your say, to have your speech. We've always exceeded those state minimum standards, every single time. We've gone further by allowing comment by phone, by allowing comment by mail, and by allowing comment in person. Where the Opens, Open Meetings Act only allowed it, I believe, virtually, if I'm not mistaken, was the only opportunity that people would be able to actually have their comment heard. So the other thing is that we're not just compliant here in El Paso, we're proactive. And, and I can quote the, the section here from, from this, uh, the Open Meetings Act, which is 551 dot 007. And honestly, if the public isn't given the opportunity to comment on an agenda item at any time under this section of the Open Meetings Act, that item can become voidable. That is, that is what happens when we do not allow public comment regarding an agenda item. The other thing is, is that we have always provided to, to try to protect the integrity of our decisions, and I can speak for this council in particular, and ensure that we are legal and ethically bound and compliant. So those, tho, that, that piece is my statement on that. However, there's also, the intention wasn't to restrict public comment. And it, it's all opinion, but my opinion is that it's restrictive to make you wait all day long to be able to have a comment said. I had my staff, we were working late, and we, we, we pulled just the last six months of data, just the last six months of data, as to how long it takes people waiting. And so I'll go back to our last meeting, which was, um, April 29th. And we had somebody waiting six hours and 38 minutes to speak two hours, excuse me, to speak two hours and 45 seconds. Out of that, two minutes, sorry, did I say hours again? Sorry, two minutes and 45 seconds. Two, yes. So out of the 10 people that signed up, one left. The prior, the prior meeting, which was on April 15th, we had 36 people that signed up for public comment. Out of those, 11 left, 11. That's one-third of the people that signed up for public comment did not make public comment. And why? Because that one averaged six hours and 48 minutes to get somebody to the, to the podium to make a comment. I think, in my opinion, that's restrictive. The other thing that I have and just a few more, and I promise I'll be, I'll be done. February 25th, we had 12 people that signed up. On average, everybody waited three hours, three and a half hours to say their piece. Now, that's because what, what we've done and what we've allowed to do for council is to move items around. It's actually very disorganized to do that, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. I feel that it's, it's better when somebody knows it goes in order. But because we're being conscious of public that's out here waiting, we pull items up on the agenda to be able to get them out. And even when we did that, we had one person waiting over five hours. So to me, that's the restrictive piece. It's the sitting around and waiting. I don't know who in this, in this, um, in the gallery right now can afford to wait over four hours at a time every two weeks to have your public comment heard. I know I can't. And so that was the purpose, that was my intention behind this. So I wanted to make sure that I made that public for everybody to, to not assume what my intention was or assume that what you wrote in your opinion or your blog was correct. It is not. And so for the record, is why I wanted to come on today and say, this was my original intention. It was never to restrict public comment. As Rep. Canales confirmed, everybody has the same amount of time. In my opinion, for me, I, by the late afternoon, I'm pretty much spent mentally. I'd rather hear what you have to say early on. That's just my preference. Because I'm a little sharper at that time when it comes to listening to what you have to say. I want to be able to give that person my full attention. But I will tell you, over the last six months' worth of meetings, especially the last one, and I'll go before we, we, uh, came on. December 17th was the last council meeting that was had here. And there, it was an average of seven hours that people waited in order to hear their public comment behind the agenda item. So that's the piece. I also pulled it for call to the public. And call to the public, we've had, um, I think five, seven, 11 people that have roughly called. I think it's about, on, on average, it's about seven people that sign up for public comment. They speak an average of two minutes and 33 seconds, yet they wait three hours, three and a half hours on average until they speak. That's not efficient to me. And so when I look at what the ACLU has provided when it comes to protecting public comment, we're in line with that. When I look to see what we're, what we're talking about, when we talk about, um, legality, we're within the legal limit of that. And I think we're actually more, because on average, based off of what I researched, public comment is limited to two minutes. In El Paso, we've allowed three, and I think that's more than adequate for, um, for being able to, to provide your comment in what is described, as I know, a limited public forum. This is still business at the end of the day. Counsel is business. We're doing the city's business. And so I wanted to make sure that I, that I made it clear for those that took it upon themselves to speak for me early on without reaching out or, or having a conversation and in a respectful manner. This is why I went and I was, I co-sponsored this with, with Rep. Fierro. It was never the intention to restrict public comment or not make you part of the process. It was to try to be considerate of your time, to get you back to work on time, to be able to get you to, if you needed childcare. I look forward to people taking advantage of coming in at 10:00 AM so that they are able to get back to their day. If you're missing out on work, if you have to be here and you're not getting paid, this is an opportunity for you to come to counsel, have your voice heard, and then go back and do the rest of your day on what you, what you need to provide for your family. So thank you so much for the co-sponsor, Rep. Fierro. Thank you for the clarification, Rep. Canales. I appreciate it. And thank you to my colleagues for allowing me this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Fierro?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Representative Maltonado, on the, the research. And you, you brought some very good points. I mean, this was never intended to keep people from, um, being part of the process, to restrict their public comment, to us not being transparent, um, to keep people from not sharing their thoughts or opinions on, on agenda items. It was quite the opposite. The, I believe that this is a living document. And this is an, an opportunity for us to increase participation from the public. What, by moving it to 10 o'clock, I expect more people to be involved. Um, Representative Acevedo said that some people want to be here all day. I, I, I guess, but I believe that if we, if we limit it to between what this, what we anticipated to do, we'd get more participation. We'd have more people knowing what time they could arrive here and knowing what time, um, they can have their, their say and then go on to, to, um, make a living and pay taxes. I believe, um, this is also, and, and Ms., um, we have the research, we have the data that shows this is the best practice in Texas. You know, the, the, these changes are what Texas and, and other communities are doing. And they're, they're showing that it's a positive thing for the community. You know, what happens when we sit here, we have people speaking on Agenda Item 31 and they're waiting four and five hours. Uh, I'll give you an example that happened a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago. There was a young lady here with one of the unions who wanted to speak. And we went through that array of, can you move my item up, Mayor? Can you move my item? But by the time her item got moved up, it was fourth in line. She had to wait four or five hours and had to catch a flight. If that person, if we had had this in place at that time, that person could have spoken between 10 and 11 and not had to make a choice whether they wanted to make their flight on time or they wanted to stay and have their say at council. You know, the structure is a good thing. Um, structure i- i- is going to save us money and, and make our staff more productive. You know, they also would like to get back to their, their desks, to their offices and, and do the work that, that, um, we're paying them for and the citizens of El Paso are paying them for. So I, I think this, overall, this is a great opportunity for us to, to bring structure, to save taxpayer dollars and to have more involvement when it comes to the community say. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Well, I have one last thought, and, and this is, this is very special. I want to thank Representative Canales publicly for his leadership in addressing all the false narratives on social media. Um, he was the only one that, that went on there and, and, um, cleared the, the miss, the misrepresentation and the false narratives that were being spread. So thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Limon?
And Council, please, no side conversations while the meeting isn't, isn't in session. I've seen some side conversations take place.
Thank you, Ms. Prime. Representative Limon?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just begin. Um, Carla, page three on the presentation right now?
Yes, ma'am. IT, can you pull up the presentation for Representative Limon?
Well, for everyone. Page three. As you look, um, as you look at the order, updated order of meeting, meetings, I believe that the item that is posted at 10:00 AM, which is roll call and invocation, should come before the Pledge of Allegiance, as we've had before. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this motion that roll call and invocation come at the beginning of the meeting because that sets the stage for a meeting. Here.
We have a motion on the table to amend the original motion. Is there a second? All right, Ms. Prime here, no second? That motion fails?
And I will continue, Mayor, because I still have the floor. Thank you. Thank you, Council. In looking at the discussion of moving public comment on regular agenda items to 10 o'clock or thereafter, we've heard a lot of different things today. And, um, I do want to state, because I think that my motion or my item will become moot because we've already made a, a decision as to, to do this. But I also wanted to have an opportunity. When I left council meeting the last time and I was traveling home, I, I had this really unsettling feeling that I had voted in mistake, that I had voted erroneously. And the only person that voted against it was Representative Acevedo. And I was going home, I was thinking like, okay, well, how did that happen? What, what's going on? What happened here? I could only think of occasions where I have been on council and seen people wanting to speak on a particular subject. The decision to wait as long as it's necessary to speak on an item that is close and dear to their heart is more important than efficiency and it's more important than, uh, we're going to do better for the people. Today, we just passed an item that is clearly going to give the public the choice. They can either wait as it is, or they may speak at 10 o'clock. I think that that is an excellent resolution to this. But to simply put people in a little box and saying, "No, you have to speak at 10 o'clock", I, I just didn't, I don't think that that was the right vote that I made on that item. When we start looking at, um, at this item, it's going to give us a predictable time. Well, people now will, can speak at 10 or they can come back and speak at another time. But the most important thing that was discussed on this item is the effect of moving agenda items around. And I too have been guilty. The person that Representative Fierro spoke about reached out to me and said, "I have a plane to catch. I must speak before." And this is important. The motion failed, but that's not the important, the most important thing. It's that someone wanted to speak up and somebody wanted to say something. We got into all sorts of tangles in moving items, and then we paused for a press conference. And we did all sorts of things that were not listed in our agenda. And so therefore, we were all over the place and people did wait until a very, very long time. I would hope that if we are going to begin that process again of moving agenda items, that we realize the cause that it will have on the public. And I know that it'll, it's going to come up. It'll come up very, very soon. And so I think that if someone wants to come and speak to the public, so be it. If someone wants to speak on every item, so be it. But in the last four months, we've only had one person that spoke on many items, one person. And so I don't think it's right that because one person did something, that we should throw it all out with, with the bathwater. So thank you, Representative Acevedo, for making that motion and at appropriate time, I will, um, remove mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Limon. Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to speak on a couple of things. The first is just to recognize that I think, um, all of us that are sitting on this dais do our due diligence and our homework prior to coming to council meetings. And I would like to recognize everybody's effort in terms of, you know, uh, getting data and just looking for precedence on certain items. And that was the case for me and others, uh, on this dais two weeks ago when we were discussing how to amend these rules of order. And for that reason, for all of the homework we do before we get to one of these meetings, we were very intentional in making sure that we did not commit the same mistakes that other cities have done in the past, such as Austin, who, you know, did have to go through a lawsuit because of limiting public comment. So I want to make clear, just as others have done before me, that this is not what this is about. This is about making people part of the process. And I want to speak a little bit more about that because I have received, um, emails and calls regarding this agenda item. But strangely enough, most of the people that I've received those emails and calls from, I've never seen sign up for public comment. And that's not the way it should be. I want to receive emails and calls from my constituents. I want to receive emails and calls from my constituents, but I also want to see them here at council. And they don't always have to come to council to speak on an item. They can also engage with any one of us at our meetings because I follow all of my colleagues on social media and I know that they are all being actively involved in their community at meetings or conversations or cafecitos or different events around the city. And we make ourselves available to the public because we want you to tell us what your thoughts are. We want the public to engage with us. We want the public to be a part of this process with us. This is a new journey for many of us on the dais and we are eager to hear from you. And we appreciate the emails and the phone calls, but we also want to see you here at council. And that is why now you can come at 10:00 AM and know that you can speak up exactly at that time. And so, this is an invitation to the community to be a part of this with us and an invitation for everyone to know that we are doing our homework and that we really, when we come here to make decisions, we have the best of intentions to include everybody in those decisions. We know our decisions affect our community and, believe me, none of the decisions that we are making, we take lightly. This is very serious and we thank you for engaging with us, but we want to see more participation. That is what this is about. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative Chavez. Representative Canales? You're on. You're good? Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Representative Acevedo?
Sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to kind of confirm with Ms. Neiman, the reason that we have the Pledge of Allegiance at 9:00 AM, then the Proclamations and Recognition, which are the ceremonial items, before 10:00 AM roll call and invocation is because we could start the meeting without a quorum if we wanted to, right?
It's actually, the 9:00 AM is not considered an official meeting of council because you all are doing ceremonial items. So, you don't need a quorum of council to do proclamations or ceremonial items. 10:00 AM is a roll call so that you all could officially have a quorum of council and begin having your meeting and deliberating and taking action.
Okay, so that was the intent, to kind of clarify that and make it very clear to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Ms. Neiman, would you help clarify what we're going to be voting on, or Ms. Pryne, so they'll know?
So, it'll be the official adoption of the rules as we went through them on this presentation and then they will go into effect at the next city council meeting. Correct. So, you are voting to, you've already voted on the amendment, so you need to vote to approve as amended and then the rules will take effect at the next city council meeting.
All right, Representative Lemon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last comment and thank you for bringing that up. So technically, when we meet, when those of us that meet at 9:00, we will begin the meeting. Those that arrive late, it doesn't matter because they're not here for the meeting. Our meeting starts at 10:00. And I think that's disrespectful and for that reason, I will be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, Ms. Pryne, call for the vote. Oh, we have public comment.
Yes, Mayor. We have Patricia Osmond, who's joining virtually. Ms. Osmond, good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. I want to say, I believe some people's comments may have been directed at me and that is fine. And so, there are some issues that Canales and some other members did not bring up that I listened to right now. And this is one of the reasons why speaking during an agenda item is very important because what was not considered was this, which is a red flag that people may have rung about, which is part of the language, providing, however, that the time allowed for each citizen's appearance before city council will be limited to a fixed number of minutes at the discretion of the presiding officer, which is the mayor. So, yes, citizens' time can be limited. It also states that a citizen cannot mark all or sign up for anything. Now, mind you, I have signed up for quite a few items, not for all. But El Paso has had a very long history, yes, of public speaking. It didn't start with me. It didn't start with Ms. Turner in the gallery, speaking on various items. There was Teresa Gallo when her father wasn't there. There was truly been a decade ago. I have been part of the public sphere for many decades. And public transparency, really quick. The YouTube video that everybody can see, so that y'all are aware, the audio is very low for anybody who listens to it live and especially afterwards on the broad, so that you could speak to your IT, for full transparency. But several issues. The groups of 10 or more, members must give up their citizen three-minute right and have one person do it. Apparently, y'all have been doing that for a while, unbeknownst to me. Part of what is unclear also is when citizens are speaking even at 10:00 AM and they are speaking on several agenda items, this is not made clear. Is that person going to have three minutes per agenda item or just three minutes now to speak on agenda items at 10:00 AM? That is still not clear in any of this. Quite frankly, not only did y'all make decisions yesterday in regards to commissions and linda, which commissions being public and on air is another avenue of transparency. Public comment to the council, transparency. And the reason for all this transparency is because the decisions that you make, yes, they are business, but they are city business done with citizens' tax dollars. Even federal tax dollars still come from local. So, it is not a privilege, it is a right because what you are doing is with our tax dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Osmond. You've reached the three minutes, ma'am. Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Kabood. He will be followed by Amber Perez and Lisa Turner, Carol Cassidy. Good morning, sir. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. And I want to thank Representative Acevedo for his amendment. He is my representative. Thank you. And I want to thank all the rest of you who did vote for it. I think it's very important that you hear the public speak during an item, as I am doing right now. It has a direct effect on y'all. You get to hear what the people who you're serving have to say about an item, as opposed to pushing us off into the morning so that you can forget what we said earlier when you get to an item and you just go through as you wish. Again, government is for the people, by the people, not upon the people. You all are responsible to us. As the previous speaker said, you deal with a lot of tax dollars and you need to hear what we have to say about how we want our money spent. You have a fiduciary responsibility to us. We don't have it to you. You need to listen to what we say. You need to take our opinion and use it as consideration for the decisions you're going to make. As far as having a more efficient meeting, well, when the effect is so negative, the efficiency metric doesn't apply. The problem with the meetings seems like it's more of scheduling and management of the meetings. And that's something you should look at instead of trying to find ways so that you don't have to hear what the public has to say. I want to thank y'all very much. And Sissy, I hope you'll vote for this. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amber Perez. Ms. Perez, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Amber Perez, good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My apologies that I wasn't able to physically, my apologies that I wasn't able to be there physically. I'm on a panel today. I initially signed up to say very much so, I think what I said last time during the course of this items discussion, I have definitely changed that. I would like to thank Representative Acevedo for creating this kind of middle ground where we're able to do what council is saying, right? Which is allowing for time for people to be able to come at a specific time and also honoring the decision of those who maybe feel very impassioned and empowered to go and speak at when the item is being read. I think this is a definitely showing that the city listens, that you listen, that this is truly a community that is made up of these checks and balances and that's, at the end of the day, we all want what's best for one another and for our community. So, again, I can't help but to thank you for finding a middle ground where we're able to kind of meet everybody in the middle. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Lisa Turner. She will be followed by Carol Cassidy. Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
I am your institutional memory. I've been coming to city council since Mayor Ramirez. That's quite a few mayors. You want to know how to streamline your agenda? Come talk to me. We'll sit down. I'll tell you how to do it and you'll be more efficient. Ms. Rocha, you talked about somebody waiting six to seven hours for public comment. I think I remember that day because you didn't do your job by having public comment at the posted time of 12:00. You post something on the agenda, you best follow it. Okay? A lot of these problems you have, you make them. Now, I'm worried about the pledge and the prayer at 9:00 and the proclamations. Let me tell you, if you don't have a quorum here and you have these peoples for proclamations and three or four of you don't show up, it says a lot. It says you don't give a you-know-what about these people. You don't care about what's happening in this city. You don't care about the people. I know what the city attorney says, but unless there's some law that says you can't do it and call a quorum at 9:00 AM in the morning and then do this, then that's what you should do. Because God help you, because everything's going to come apart because you're humans. I know what's going to happen. Three or four of you are not going to show up and groups are going to take insults. Now, you say you're going to start at 10:00 for people who want to talk. And then sometime after that, and nobody knows when it's going to be, you're going to have public comment. How is that going to work? If 60 people come down to talk at 10:00 on agenda items, that's three times 60. I don't know who's going to do it. I don't know how many people are going to be here. I don't know if I just want to come down for public comment. I don't know when it's going to be because you don't have it posted. You need to have it posted. Set a time for public comment. It's part of, speaking on agenda items and public comment are two different things. They need two separate postings. I'm afraid you will be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Now, pay attention to 551.007E. A lot of politicians get upset.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. You've reached three minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Criticism.
Final speaker is Carol Cassidy. Carol Cassidy? I don't see her in chambers and I don't see her in the queue either, Mayor. So, that concludes public comment on this item.
All right, Ms. Pryne, seeing no further comment on this particular item, would you please call for this vote?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, seconded by Representative Canales, and this is to approve the rules of order as amended. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes 7-2-1, Representative Lemon Vorene.
All right, and I just want to say, you know, this is, the intent of what we were trying to get at here is to engage more public participation. And it's complicated and we will continue to work through this and if we don't get it right, we'll make changes. And again, you know, we were wanting to be very respectful and I don't see, you know, I'm learning, you know, sitting in this chair that, you know, we want to be respectful of your time. And we have had people that have said in this chamber that were in a condition not to sit for six, eight hours while we were conducting business. So, our attempt was to make sure that we gave them an opportunity to voice their concerns on an agenda item early enough that they didn't have to sit through the council meeting. So, if we don't get it right, we will tweak this and we'll get it fixed. So, we ask for your patience, but we want more engagement by our public. We want you to know what time we are doing this and we will get it dialed in and we'll get this fixed for the public. But we want you to know, as the public, your voice is very, very important to what we do on this dais. We could not be doing our jobs without public input. So, the last thing we want to do is to restrict public input. We want more public input. So, I want to thank those of you that are here today that were offering your opinions and your suggestions on how we should move forward. And the more information and the more thoughts we get, we'll get this fixed. But I think we're off to a very good start and I thank Council for voting today.
All right, Ms. Pryne, the next item, please.
Yes, sir. That brings us to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called up for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Ms. Pryne. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the following revisions. Page six, item 15, moved to the regular agenda per Representative Acevedo.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent? Okay, Ms. Pryne, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Mayor Protem Chavez, seconded by Representative Lemon, to approve the consent agenda as revised. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Representative Fierro not present. Mayor, would you like to take the item that was moved to regular?
Yeah, let's take item number six.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Item fifteen is the award of Solicitation 2025-0157, Security Guard Services MCAT to Night Eyes Protective Services, Inc., for a term of three years with a total estimated amount of $1,181,535. This contract will provide security guard services at various museum locations, museums and cultural affairs department administrative offices and MCAT-sponsored markets and festivals.
Okay, is there a presentation on this one? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Second.
All right, let's, Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor. So, one thing, this is, I think, one of the first meetings where we have something over a million dollars on consent as we made that rule change not too long ago. But I have the heartburn on the million-dollar plus, you know, big contracts like this. But as I was looking at this one, I saw that this represents a 103.64% increase due to increase in non-arm security guard service hours, addition of armed security guard services and hourly rate increases. So, my basic question on this is, why was there such a huge increase on this?
Good morning, for the record, Ben Five, Managing Director. So, some of these are estimates, sir, over the three years, but a big part of our increase is actually increase in security required or recommended by the Office of Emergency Management for our large-scale festivals and events. We are very cognizant that safety is paramount in the planning of those large-scale events, especially as we've seen over the last few years at other events nationally, issues. We want to make sure that we are prepared and ready and so you will see an increase in armed security for those events. Also, as we look at exhibitions at our sites, sometimes there are requirements when we borrow an exhibition. For example, there's a Frida Kahlo exhibition coming up in the spring at the Museum of Art. When we borrow artwork from other institutions, they oftentimes will require things like armed security or increase in security because of the assets we'll be borrowing.
All right, that makes complete sense. I really appreciate that explanation. And I, I, cause I was looking at this, and like, are we just getting the same services and just paying a lot more? But we're getting additional services and more security out of this. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Prime, call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by alternate mayor Protem Fierro, seconded by Representative Mayor Protem Chavez to approve item fifteen. I'm sorry, it was Representative Canales. Seconded by Representative Canales to, on that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take the next item, Ms. Prime.
Yes, sir. That brings us to page 10, to item number 19. And this is discussion and action on a resolution authorizing the expenditure of District Five discretionary funds in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for the purchase of water, safety gear, and vests. This expenditure will support the upcoming opening of the city's water parks and serves a municipal purpose by enhancing the quality of life for the citizens of El Paso, by providing a safe and enjoyable experience for all visitors to the city's water parks this season. This item was submitted by Representative Nino.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this item?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Nino, seconded by Mayor Protem Chavez, I believe. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's take item number 20.
Yes, sir. Item twenty is discussion and action to direct the city manager to allocate $1,000 from District One discretionary funds to support the purchase of refreshments for movies in the park at Brayden Aboot Memorial Park on May 23rd, 2025. The allocation of discretionary funds will support the purchase of popcorn, snacks, ice cream, water, and other refreshments for the District One Movies in the Park event scheduled for Friday, May 23rd, 2025, at 7:30 PM at Brayden Aboot Memorial Park. The featured movie will be Inside Out Two, and this item was submitted by Mayor Protem Chavez.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion, Representative Limon?
Mayor, um, or I guess, Ms. Prime, if I may, what is the difference, if you look at item nineteen, it reflects District Five, which was from Representative Nino. When you look at twenty, twenty-one, and several others, it says all districts. What's the difference? And shouldn't it reflect the district, um, that is placing it on the agenda?
You are correct, ma'am.
For future?
You, for future, we will make sure that the district is appropriately noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Ms. Limon. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve, uh, item number twenty?
Yes, sir. On that motion?
Representative Chavez, you have a comment? Okay. Ms. Prime?
Yes, sir. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one is discussion and action that the city council accept the donation of $2,500 from Schneider Electric for the District One Community Cookout at Westside Community Park and other signature community events to be held within the district. This item was submitted by Mayor Protem Chavez, and it is in District One.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
Yeah, motion to, I was wondering if I could take Ms. Prime, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three together, since they're all referring to the same event?
Yes, ma'am. Item twenty-two is discussion and action that the city council accept the donation of $500 from Rio Vista Behavioral Health for the District One Community Cookout at Westside Community Park and other signature community events to be held within the district. Item twenty-three is discussion and action that the city council accept the donation of $5,000 from Job Materials for the District One Community Cookout at Westside Community Park and other signature community events to be held within the district.
Thank you, Ms. Prime. And just to let the public know, um, we are doing a community cookout, and I do not want to use taxpayer dollars towards this event. So I am very, uh, thankful that I received some very generous donations from people in our community. It's gonna be a family fun-filled event. Everyone's invited. It's gonna be from 11 to three on Saturday, May 31st. And this is, uh, just for the purpose of, you know, building community engagement and, uh, participation. So I'm very excited to offer this in honor of all the constituents in District One and others who want to join us. Thank you.
So we'll take that, okay. There, there's a motion and a second. Any, Representative Limon? Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, let me clear you up. Okay. Seeing no comment, call for the vote, Ms. Prime?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Mayor Protem Chavez, seconded by Representative Rocha, and this is for items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item twenty-four, which council discussed. It was discussion and action to allow for public comment on agenda items as they are heard during the meeting with a three-minute time limit. And this is Representative Limon's item.
Okay. Mayor, wish to delete this item? Okay. We have a, uh, motion and a second to remove the item? Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limon, seconded by Representative Acevedo, and this is to delete item twenty-four. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
That brings us to item twenty-five. This is discussion and action on a resolution to authorize the expenditure of District Three discretionary funds in an amount not to exceed $1,000 for capital costs related to the new pet pantries at El Paso Public Libraries, mobile microchip scanners, and related actrums, which serves municipal purpose by nurturing and promoting a healthy, sustainable community for El Paso pets and pet owners, and to allow the city manager to effectuate any budget transfers or contracts related to these documents.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Representative Rocha?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate it. And, and thank you to Rep. Canales for leading the, the charge on the pet pantries. It's an issue that's come up quite frequently in District Three. And so I'm really happy to, to move toward getting that pet pantry installed. It'll be at the Jose Sisnetos Library on Hawkins, which is the only library within, uh, District Three at this time. And so, um, anything that we can do to support that, it's also going to have a microchip scanner, which I understand is gonna be better weatherproofed, so that it can withstand some of the weather that we've been seeing. So that individuals that find these pets on the, on the streets in your neighborhoods can potentially take this, uh, this pet over to the scanner and be able to find its home and return it to its owner. Um, I think it's a great move in the right direction when it comes to trying to find, um, ways to help the community, especially the pet pantry. I'm a huge fan of, of this, um, of this effort, Rep. Canales. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Representative Canales?
I wanted to say thank you right back to you for following through. Uh, you, you made the commitment to support this, uh, when, when I, uh, had my item on the agenda for my discretionary fund. So I appreciate you, uh, adding your, your contribution to it. And again, these will be placed throughout the city, uh, at all the libraries, and the project's moving along quite quickly. So, we, we hope to have them deployed very soon. But, uh, this, this is a big help. So thank you.
Ms. Prime, call for the vote on this item?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Rocha, seconded by Representative Mayor Protem Chavez. And this is to approve item twenty-five. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's take number twenty-six.
Item twenty-six is discussion and action on a resolution to authorize the expenditure of District Six discretionary funds in an amount not to exceed $1,000 for capital costs related to the new pet pantries at El Paso Public Libraries, including mi, mobile microchip scanners and related actrums, which serves a municipal purpose of nurturing and promoting healthy and sustainable community for El Paso pets and pet owners, and to allow the city manager to effectuate budget transfer, budget transfers or contracts as necessary. This is Representative Fierro's item.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this one?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Representative Fierro?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to, uh, thank Representative, uh, Canales on his leadership on this item. Thank you. Although you said thank you to her, not to me, but it's okay. Um, but more importantly, Mayor, our, our pet pantry is gonna be at, uh, 1865 Dean Martin at the Irving Schwartz Library. And, and I want to, uh, give a big shout out to the staff at the library. They, they're just do a wonderful job, but they're always willing to adapt and do whatever it takes to, to make sure that the public is, is taken care of. And now that these, their dogs and cats are being taken care of. Thank you again, Representative Canales. Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Canales?
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you right back to you, Rep. Fierro. Uh, maybe you took a little bit more twisting your arm, but you came through on the money you promised. So, uh, no, with, um, you all have been great to work with, and, and I'm so happy that you have decided to contribute this additional, uh, funding to, to the project, I think. Uh, again, the public's gonna be really excited when they see, uh, the pantries deployed because, uh, I'll pull back the curtain a little bit and say that we, we already have the, the storage, uh, containers, and we've, we've tested them out, we've loaded them up with, with pet food. Uh, and they're very impressive when you see them. Uh, I think it'll be a great service to the community. So, uh, watch this space, and, uh, we'll, we'll have an announcement soon about when these will get rolled out. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Prime, call for the vote?
Yes, sir. There's a motion and a second to approve item twenty-six. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Stick item number twenty-seven?
Item twenty-seven is a presentation of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee Annual Report for calendar year 2024. This item was placed by Representative Canales.
Okay. It's just a presentation, right? Representative, okay. Representative Canales?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Prime, should I give it from here? Is it better if I go to the podium? What makes the most sense?
You can, you can control the presentation if you go to the podium?
I'll do it that way, then.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll take off my, my council hat for a moment, uh, and introduce this presentation in my role as the Chair of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Um, we hope to have committee members here to present. Uh, I know we postponed this item from, from two weeks ago because they couldn't make it at the last minute, and the scheduling didn't work out. So they all send the, they all send their apologies. Uh, you'll see, usually their attendance is really great. So, uh, they couldn't make it here, but they do make it to pretty much every single meeting. Uh, as you know from our conversations, that's not always typical of every committee. So I'm, I'm grateful to them for that. Uh, the, the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee is one of the only committees that, uh, until yesterday, was already required to, uh, produce an annual report every year and deliver that report to the council. Uh, we have to do so by April of the following calendar year. So, two weeks ago, you were, uh, delivered the report in person, and we're following up with this presentation today. Uh, the ASAC also, uh, has a strategic plan. That's not necessarily, uh, a standard for all of the committees, again, until, uh, the new requirements that we approved yesterday. But, uh, the, the committee has a mission that the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee will advise, support, and advocate for the well-being of all animals in the El Paso community. Um, the, the purview of the ASAC actually extends beyond just the city. This is one of the committees that we're required to have by state law. Uh, and, and the purview extends to all animal shelter facilities, uh, public or private within El Paso County. And so, uh, we're, we're taking a look at a much broader, uh, array of, of animal welfare concerns beyond just what happens within the city's shelter, although that's a large focus. Uh, and we have a vision that El Paso will be the leader in animal welfare. I won't read through all of these, but we do have specific strategic goals. And of course, they align very heavily with the city's, uh, vision for what we, we, uh, want our animal shelter to be. Uh, again, that's supported by the, the first one, the main pillar, that we will, we want to support the City of El Paso's initiative to reach and sustain a 90% or greater live release rate. Uh, that goal is by 2025, that's the end of our strategic plan. We are very close to that number. Uh, and so we'll see where we land by the end of the year. But I, I think that goal was set several years ago at a time when it sounded very ambitious. And the, the shelter has done a great work, uh, a great job to, uh, put in the work to reach very close to that number. Uh, this slide shows the committee membership in 2024. You see more members there than there are appointees because a few, uh, cycled off and cycled on during the year. But that number down at the bottom, I think, is, is the most impressive. There was close to a 98% attendance rate, uh, for our meetings in 2024. Uh, the, the members of, of the committee, uh, the ones who have served before and the ones who are serving now have all been incredibly dedicated. Uh, and again, that's not necessarily typical for, for every committee at the city. Not that the, the members aren't dedicated, but this is an exceptionally high attendance rate. So again, thank you to the members who did a great job, uh, making sure that they were available and, and active in every meeting. And I will note that these meetings are, are virtual. They're held on Wednesday nights, uh, once a month. And, uh, the, the committee has had the discussion about returning to in person, but the, the virtual attend, the, the attendance, I think, has been boosted by the fact that these have been virtual, and it makes it accessible for people to attend. A little bit by the numbers, we held eleven meetings during the year, uh, to, discussed a total of thirty-five different agenda items. Uh, we welcomed four new members throughout the year, so four folks, uh, cycled off of the board, and we welcomed four new ones. And we had a total meeting duration of, for the year of seventeen hours and eleven minutes. It's a lot of time spent discussing, uh, all of the concerns within animal welfare. And these are the main topics we discussed. Uh, we talked a lot about the Westside Adoption Center, the, the renovation and expansion, obviously, throughout the calendar year of 2024. Uh, the, the council initiated that process of the, the renovation. Uh, and I think, uh, we, we have seen the progress at that facility, uh, throughout last year and, and continuing to today. Uh, we, we discussed pretty heavily the timelines for construction, improvements to the space, uh, a lot of discussion about the, a veterinary suite and what's possible at that location. Uh, and, and we also discussed the ongoing funding and, and operational considerations for the expanded facility once it's finished. Uh, we discussed return-to-owner strategies very heavily. So, uh, a, a big focus of the committee has been increasing return-to-owner rates. So if an animal is lost, uh, finding the right strategies for getting that animal back to its owner, back to its family. Uh, this included better access to public microchip scanners. It's one of the things that we just discussed in relation to the pet pantries. Uh, that's one way that we can get more scanner access out into the community. Uh, utilizing social media for, for alerts about lost pets, uh, and engaging with, with rescue groups to help the city's efforts in, in, uh, reunification of animals. Uh, we talked about, uh, we, we created a mobile microchip subcommittee that actually was created in 2023, but most of its work happened during 2024. Uh, this is, has been an ongoing discussion, uh, both by the, the subcommittee and also in, in the, the full membership, to talk about ways that we can get more mobile microchip scanners out into the community, be that tethered in public locations, placed with local businesses. Uh, we have microchip scanners at our fire departments. Uh, we want to have as many options as possible for people to, uh, you know, if they find a pet in their neighborhood, a lost pet, they don't have to travel very far. It's not a big burden for them to try to figure out who the owner is and, and start that reunification process. Uh, we discussed overcrowding and euthanasia rates. Uh, the shelter's capacity has been challenged a lot over the last, uh, over the last year. And, uh, unfortunately, there has continued to be some euthanasia. You know, the, we, the, the shelter operates on a no-kill model, but that doesn't mean that there's zero euthanasia. Uh, and so, uh, we discussed very heavily intake trends, uh, the, the foster program and the impact on, on the capacity at the shelter, uh, that, that has. Uh, and a lot of, a lot was adoption strategy and, and ways to reduce euthanasia rates through community engagement and, and, um, incentivizing people to come adopt. Uh, and we also spoke about the, the budget and funding sources for animal services. Um, it's something that came up quite a lot. Uh, from 2023 to 2024, there was quite a significant budget increase for the department. And so, there's a lot of discussion about the impact of that and, and where that additional budget would be, would be deployed. And there are a few concerns that came up that were, that, uh, were discussed multiple times throughout the year. Uh, one was stray animal welfare. Um, we, we talked about access to shelter throughout the year. One was stray animal welfare. We we talked about access to shelter and food and medical care for for strays, particularly for, you know, strays that the a member of the public was finding and bringing to the shelter. We we talked a lot about ways to improve community education, about responsible pet ownership, making sure that your owned animal doesn't escape and become a stray, as well as partnerships with the other rescue organizations across the county. We talked about spay and neuter programs and veterinary availability. I plug all the time that we have veterinary positions available. Anytime I see anybody on on social media or in person, anywhere, who I learn is a veterinary student, I immediately bombard them with the the information about our our available positions because nationwide, there's a shortage of veterinarians. We're also impacted by that. And that has a big impact on the number of spay-neuter procedures that we're able to carry out every year. And so that was a frequently raised concern, that we don't we need to build additional capacity for spay and neuter purposes, but also just for, you know, general medical capacity within the the city shelters. We talked there were concerns about public education and outreach. I don't think anyone on the committee criticized the the city's work in getting the word out. There was an immense amount of of public education work that happened, including campaigns on on local television. Last year, there was the the campaign with the message "Make adoption your only option" that really hit the airwaves last year in in a good way. But we we talked about the need for maybe more messaging about, as I said before, responsible pet ownership. So not just the adoption portion, but also, once you have an animal, making sure that that animal is well cared for and that they stay, you know, under under your control and your possession, and and they don't get loose and then make their way back to the shelter. That's that's a difficult problem to address. And we talked about city ordinance clarifications. There's been some discussion about potential work to Title VII. And there were concerns raised about about city ordinances related to animal control, specifically trapping, breeding, some public safety concerns. And those are things that the the committee discussed potentially being addressed as the city looks to make updates to Title VII, which is the animal portion of our city code. And then we made some specific recommendations to the council. Again, the the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee is an advisory committee. Their their key function is to make specific recommendations to the council, and this annual report has been the the mechanism by which the ASAC does so over the past several years. I'll mostly click through that slide. I'll click through that slide quickly, but it does have an explanation of why this is the method by which we deliver those those recommendations. The first recommendation that the committee approved this year was to continue progress on the West Side Adoption Center conversion. Again, I don't think there's any question that this would continue, but the the committee wants to make sure that the the council is committed to providing that shelter with the support that it needs, the Adoption Center on the West Side in the in the former Morehead Middle School building, and recommends proceeding through the next phase of construction as quickly as possible. There's there's currently construction on the the upper level. If you've been to that site, it's kind of a a split level. And so there's the main building of the actual Adoption Center and the parking lot area. That's all being constructed right now. There's a second planned future phase, and and the recommendation is to proceed to that phase as quickly as possible after the completion of the first phase. The second recommendation is to expand the mobile microchip scanner program. Again, these are recommendations coming out of calendar year 2024. And so I think the the pet pantries program at the library and the attached microchip scanners is a big part of addressing this recommendation, but we can continue to do more. There have been discussions about potential other programs that I think the committee will be bringing to the council, but I also will be bringing to the council over the next few months for ways that we can deploy other microchip scanners, potentially including to veterinary clinics, to our city community centers and recreation centers. And we also envisioned a a potential expanded online directory of where these are located, so that people can access them easily. The third recommendation was to enhance public education and outreach on pet ownership and ordinances. I think I preempted myself a little bit in explaining the the concerns that were raised. But the the committee wants to make sure that Title VII is exceptional exceptionally clear and that the city does a good job of explaining to the public what the what the law says, what they're required to do with regard to animals and their pets, and what the punishments for not not complying with that are. The the committee recommended educational workshops, multilingual resources, and potentially partnerships with schools to improve public understanding of of pet ownership responsibilities. The fourth recommendation is to develop and fund a comprehensive spay-neuter program. I will say again, the the city put together an excellent spay-a-thon event recently that that led to surgeries on more than 400 animals, and I think that's a great success. The the committee specifically talked about, you know, potentially expanding mobile clinics and that kind of spay-a-thon programming, possibly providing some sort of financial incentive for for pet owners to spay or neuter their their animals, and partnerships with local veterinarians to address the staffing shortages that we feel at the at the shelter. Recommendation number five is to implement a structured adoption follow-up program. This is also something that the shelter has been piloting over the last few months. They engaged a digital program, a digital platform, I should say, called Petzel, that does automated follow-ups with adopters after one day and after one week and at at intervals after that, collecting information about how things are going with the pets, you know, how the how the how the adoption process went first, and then how the how the pet is adjusting and how you are adjusting to being a pet owner and and doing those regular check-ins. We we see a real problem with, you know, the the idea that pets could be returned or abandoned after they're adopted from from our facilities, either the city's facilities or other rescues within El Paso County. And so we we think that a post-adoption welfare and tracking system, like the one that's, again, already being piloted somewhat in response to this concern, is a good strategy moving forward. And recommendation number six is to support and strengthen the city's trap-neuter return program for cats. So there are certain parts of the city that have larger stray cat populations than others. We are we have a a trap-neuter return initiative already, but we the committee felt that the city could expand access to humane trapping equipment, you know, cat traps that are humane and and allow those animals to come into the shelter to get their surgery and then be released back into the community, and and strengthening partnerships with local groups that privately do trap-neuter return. We think a public education campaign could also help residents understand the TNR process a little bit better and understand the benefits in in how TNR reduces the feral cat population over time. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about TNR. Some people are upset that the cats are released again into the community. You can't always contain a feral cat, but if the cat can't reproduce, then into the future, you you can reduce those populations, but do it in a way that's humane without without significant amounts of euthanasia. Those are the only those are the six recommendations. Again, the committee endeavors every year to make them achievable. They're not necessarily like the the biggest pie-in-the-sky goals. There are things that that the committee feels that the city should actively be working on or is actively working on and should persevere with. And we want to give a special thanks to all of the staff, both from Animal Services and from the city attorney's office, who support the the work of the committee. They the the meetings are incredibly well attended by staff, including staff who doesn't have to be there. I think we we see across the board at at Animal Services, those employees are incredibly dedicated to their work. It's not easy to work in an animal shelter. It's definitely not physically easy or emotionally easy. And so they're all folks who are very dedicated to to the work that they do, and they provide extra special support to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. So thank you to all of the staff there on the screen. And we'll entertain any questions.
Representative Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chris, for that wonderful presentation and for the work that you do and that your committee does. I'm sure that thanks to your leadership, you know, attendance is also great because of that. So I I appreciate it very much. I have a couple of questions, just so maybe we can have this an open discussion. There has been a lot of concern for the West Side Adoption Center, you know, in terms of when it started, some inadequacies that were there in the beginning. I know that it's moving towards a Phase Two. Could you talk about the improvements and how that has been evolving?
Sure.
At the one at Morehead?
And I I'll preface it by saying I'm not the expert on the construction project, but I it has been coming along. You can go out to the site today, and the construction crews are out there. Again, the Phase One involved the the upper level, so it's the parking lot facility, which used to be the tennis courts at Morehead Middle School that are, you know, that that area is being paved as a parking lot. It has a walking trail around it for people to walk animals from the shelter. It involves the outdoor meet-and-greet kennel areas, so like the dog runs where people can come, you know, if they're adopting a pet and they have a pet, they can bring their pet and they they have their meet-and-greets there, or they can interact with an animal before they adopt. So it has those. And then it has the main building. We all call it the Pizza Hut Building because it looks like a Pizza Hut. I think it was the, I don't want to guess. I don't remember what it was in in Morehead Middle School, but it's the southernmost building on the property, kind of off to the left as you're looking at the the entire facility. And that will be the main entrance, the welcome area. It will have some kennels for dogs and for cats. It's quite a large, quite a large building. That's the Phase One that's already underway. Again, council approved the construction contract last year, and and that's proceeding. There's not a construction contract for Phase Two, which includes the second building down below on the lower level. That's the building that's currently in use. So that was temporarily converted into into kind of temporary shelter space. It serves its purpose quite well, but it's, I think if you've been in there, you can tell it's obviously not like a fully finished building. The plan is for when Phase One is complete, those animals will move into the into the Phase One building, the Pizza Hut building, and and we'll take some action from from the city, from the council, to move on on Phase Two, on the construction of that second building.
So how many animals are there now? Do you do you know?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
But it's going to grow into something bigger, I'm assuming, right?
Mr. Kepchul's here. Approximately 100?
105.
105, okay. I was close.
And I think it's a great addition to, you know, just having access to the public for adoption.
Yeah, there's been pretty heavy activity there.
Yeah.
Folks are there all the time for adoption, for foster. I I live, it's very handy for me. It's quite quite close to where I live, so I'm there very often, and and I see a constant stream of people at the Adoption Center. And then we've had great volunteer events there and other events as well. The the Wag O'Ween, for example, last year in October, was a was a great community event. They they come up with great names. And Rescue Runners, one of our excellent volunteer partners, partner organizations, has had regular events there to have their volunteers come walk the the shelter animals. And I will say, the last one that they did there at the West Side Adoption Center, not this past weekend, but the one before, I was there and they got, I think they got through the animals in record time. Every single every single dog went out, some of them more than once, and the volunteers were were amazing. So it's it's been quite a popular addition to the the Animal Services.
And a big need, I think, in our community. It's filled a great need. Thank you, Chris, for that.
Representative Rocha?
Oh, wait, I have one more question. Sorry, Ms. Mayor.
Sorry. And we see Terry's here, too. So Terry, come on up.
Yes, no, and it's actually just on his recommendations. I know recommendation number five is about adoption, but something I didn't hear you talk about, or maybe I missed it, is also about the opportunity to foster animals. And I know that maybe it's not a recommendation of yours, but if you could just speak a little bit more about that, just because I know that there's also a great need for foster families in our community.
There is a great need for foster. We we didn't make a recommendation here because actually, we we think that the foster program is going quite well. There are, maybe you can help me with that number, how many animals currently out in foster?
Roughly 2,400.
Roughly roughly 2,400 animals. It's a lot that are out in in foster. So we have very many dedicated foster foster parents for the for the animals in the El Paso community. But it is something that we we've spoken about, and actually, in developing this recommendation, we talked about the potential for doing some sort of structured follow-up for the foster, the fosters as well. It might be more of a challenge. It's something that we talked about, like, maybe for this upcoming year, as as the department rolls out Petzel and and the check-ins for adoptions, maybe they can add on additional support for for fosters and check-ins for fosters in the coming year.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you do for for our animals and for our community. And thank you for the presentation, Chris. I appreciate.
Of course. I have a I have a foster right now, a fourteen-year-old, if anyone's looking for an older dog.
Oh, thank you.
Representative Rocha?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And Rep Canales, thank you so much for the presentation. I know that there this is something that comes up quite frequently in my district. As as Mr. Kepchul knows, we meet we we meet pretty regularly, trying to to suss out some type of opportunities and ways to better the situation that we're under. So I know that based off of, and I'm just saying this just for public comment because I want it to be part of the record, I think in in 2024, Animal Services took in about 2,300 animals, roughly. Is that right, Mr. Kepchul? Right, around 2,300?
23,000.
23,000. Oh, my gosh, 23,000. I missed a zero. Wow. 23,000 animals. There's 2,300 in the in the Animal Services location. And so that right there, for me, recommendation number three is super important, which is the pet ownership. I think that we need to to, one, work towards some some spay-neuter programs as well. I think it we we definitely need it. And and one thing that I want to make sure that's out there is that El Paso Animal Services is the only location that provides services of these kinds for all of the municipalities within this area. And so that includes everything from Las Cruces kind of area, I think, but it includes Horizon, all of those outstanding county areas. And so just the the sheer work that you all are doing to improve the situation, I'm so grateful to it. And I think that we hear a lot on the other side, and I know that there have been some individuals that have come to me and and tell me that the only option is to possibly euthanize. I would never be able to put myself in that position. And I would I don't think we'd ever be able to find staff should that happen. And so I'm just so grateful for the work that the Animal Services Advisory Committee does, to be able to provide these recommendations to us that are well thought out. And I and I hope that this is the framework for all future boards and commissions to be able to provide something very similar to to bring to council so that we understand what the what the goal is and what that end work product is going to be. So I just wanted to tell you thank you for all the work that you're doing. And thank you, Rep Canales, for bringing this to to council today.
Representative Nino?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rep Canales, as well, and everyone who's part of this extremely important board. Quick question for you, and I know that I have my 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 monthly meeting also with Terry. I I see a lot of great recommendations. And I'm curious, in regard to the recommendations, would those be something that comes forward to council that that so that we could actually take action? Or what would be the process of us moving forward with some of these recommendations?
It's up to us. Not up to us as the committee. It's up to the members of council to place items on the agenda related to these recommendations. Some of them, of course, would have budgetary impact. And so, I think as the city staff works to develop a proposed budget, and the council considers the budget over the next few months, it's something that we should think about. You know, again, these asks aren't necessarily free. They will take staff work. Some of them will take funds, and we'll have to make the decisions about what to prioritize.
Great. No, thank you. And I know I've had conversations with Ms. Mack as well. And right now, we are in the budget process where council members can make those specific budget requests, and we could advocate and allocate, you know, specific funding for specific programming or things that we see that could be best fit. So, I think that's also the perfect opportunity for us to look into our budget council requests of where we wish, we would like to, you know, allocate additional funding. But again, thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing as well with this board. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll point out one more time, this annual report is on the calendar year, and so it is only covering the period up to December. And I'll credit staff at Animal Services and, you know, all the way up to the city manager, who has been very responsive to a lot of these recommendations. And it doesn't necessarily take a long time. So, some of these are already being worked on because they were things that the committee discussed throughout the year, and just anyway, because they're good things to do. So, like I said, for example, the implementation of Petzel, the Excellent Spay-athon last year, or this year, these are reflections of some of these recommendations already being implemented without the council having to take any action.
Any more questions for Representative Canales?
Rep, thank you for all the great work that you're doing and your committee are doing. And this is a very, very good annual report that you provided us. And, you know, what I think is particular, they've already mentioned it, you know, that you gave us some very detailed recommendations that came out of the report that we can now, you know, look at adopting as council in future meetings. But, you know, your commitment and passion to the Animal Services has been stellar, and I'm glad that I was able to support a number of your initiatives and do what I could to help move this forward. But thank you and the committee for all the great work that you did and on this annual report. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say to close it out, thank you once again to all the members of the committee, because it's, they put in an incredible amount of time and effort as well. I know it's the committee I serve on, but I think it's one of the better committees in terms of the output that they generate from the meetings that they have. And so, I'm very happy that after yesterday, other committees will also be generating this type of work product that comes with, you know, specific recommendations. I think it's very helpful for the council to hear these things. And so, I'm glad that you all agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Terry, did you want to say anything, or you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Terry. From San Metro?
Yes, sir. Did you want to pick San Metro at 11:30?
Yes.
Okay, we can go to the first reading of ordinances, since those are quick in the meantime, if you like.
You have, what, a minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, this is the first reading of ordinances. These are items 29 to 31.
I make a motion to approve the introduction of the first reading
Okay.
of ordinances.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Frye, call for that vote.
Yes, sir. There's a motion made by Representative Limon, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fiero, and this is to approve the first reading of ordinances. These are items 29 to 31. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Representative Rocha not present. It's 11:30, Mayor.
Let's do Mass Transit?
Is there a motion to recess a regular city council meeting? There's a motion and a second to recess a regular city council meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the meeting is in recess at 11:30 a.m. to conduct the Mass Transit Department Board Meeting.
Good morning, Board. This is the San Metro Mass Transit Department Board Meeting. It is May 13, 2025. It is 11:30 a.m. Present in council chambers, Chair Mr. Johnson, Ms. Chavez, Mr. Acevedo, Ms. Maldonado Rocha, Ms. Boyar Trejo, Mr. Nino, Mr. Fiero, Ms. Limon, and Mr. Canales.
Wait, point of clarification?
Ms. Rocha is not present.
Oh, I apologize. Ms. Rocha is not present for the record. And today, we have no public comment. All matters listed under the consent agenda, including those on the addition to the agenda, will be considered by Mass Transit Department Board to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by board members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. The Mass Transit Department Board may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting. And we have four items on the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Motion by Mr. Nino, seconded by Ms. Limon.
Yep. All right, let's call for that vote.
Okay, and the session's open? And that passes unanimously?
Again, we're...
It was unanimous with Representative Rocha not present.
Yep, there we go.
The mayor votes on this.
I vote on this one, yeah. No worries. Representative Fiero?
Thank you, Mayor. In regard to item number four, I want to take the opportunity to thank Randy for being here today. It's unusual not to see Myron here today, because we saw him at the swearing-in of the mayor and the new council members, and he was at the state of the city where he heard District Six was the heart of El Paso. So, thank you for being here.
And where is Randy? Randy, yeah, thank you for taking the time to come down and visit and be back in El Paso. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? And the Mass Transit Department Board Meeting has adjourned at 11:33 a.m.
Is there a motion to reconvene? There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is back in session at 11:33 a.m. We're on page 12, item number 28, and this is a presentation on FY25 Tourism Development by Destination El Paso.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Madam City Manager. Full disclosure, this is my first presentation. So, usually it's a proclamation or something of that sort. So, I guess we have to ask IT to bring up the presentation?
That sounds good.
Okay, Dr. Acevedo. So, this presentation was requested by city council, which we were more than happy to come up here and give this presentation this morning. I guess I have to introduce myself. I always forget to do that. My name's Jose Garcia. I'm the president and CEO for Destination El Paso, and I'm here with the ubiquitous and Ms. Brooke Underwood. She's standing in my blind spot over here. And so, we will be conducting this presentation together. Do I call for the next slide? Oh, I can? Which one? Oh, fancy arrows. Got it. Thanks, Rep Canales. Ha ha. Okay, sorry. Again, little bit of a learning curve. Forgive me. Who is Destination El Paso? What are we, what do we do? Well, today Brooke and I here are primarily here to talk about tourism promotion, okay? And that was what the request was. What are we doing to drive visitation to El Paso? Brooke's going to go into a deeper dive about Visit El Paso. Visit El Paso is our de facto tourism marketing arm for the city of El Paso. I'll go into El Paso Live. El Paso Live is like what I'd like to call the facilities and events that Destination El Paso manages for the city of El Paso. Visit El Paso and El Paso Live is funded through hotel occupancy tax. What does that mean, hotel occupancy tax? That is tax that is collected by the hotel from the visitor. So, anybody that's staying in a hotel pays hot, hotel occupancy tax, that is then collected by the hotel and then remitted back to the city. And so, that is how Visit El Paso and El Paso Live is funded. And so, a couple of weeks ago, we had a proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week, and we talked about the impact, the economic impact that visitation has, that tourism and travel have on the city of El Paso, and it's incredible. I started out last, a couple of weeks ago, saying that it relieves the taxpayer of about $700 of burden in property taxes. And I think that's pretty incredible. And that's because there's almost $2.3 billion, and that's B, billion-dollar total direct economic impact that the city experiences through travel and tourism. Over 32,000 El Pasuans are employed by travel and tourism and the hospitality industry. And then to talk about the hotels, there's about 10,400 sleeping rooms in the city of El Paso. 1,200 of those are downtown. All of those collect hotel occupancy tax. El Paso boasts, and we lead the state, and, you know, we lead the national average in hotel occupancy at about 73%. The state's at about 63%. National average is about 63%. So, we're very, very proud of that. And then our average daily rate is about $102, and then our revenue per available room is about $75. Now, revenue per available room, some rooms are under construction, and so why that number changes a little bit. Another number that I like to talk about when we talk about the economic impact is 3.8 million visitors, or just a little over. 3.8 million visitors come to the city of El Paso, and that's where you get that $2.2 billion. Is where they're staying in the hotels, they're visiting our restaurants, they're shopping at our retailers, going to our bars, clubs, et cetera, et cetera. And so, with that, that makes, that makes travel and tourism the second largest sector, private sector, okay, outside of government and whatnot, second largest private sector in the city of El Paso, which we're very proud to promote. And so, with that, I'm going to turn the next part over to Ms. Brooke Underwood, so she can talk about Visit El Paso.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. Brooke Underwood, I do feel a little guilty that this isn't my first presentation, and I could have helped my boss, so I did not. I am happy to talk about Visit El Paso. I have been in place at the Destination Marketing Organization for 17 years. It's been my pleasure to serve on behalf of this city. It also happens to be my hometown, so it's easy to sell something I love. So, I oversee the visitor, the efforts as far as leisure tourism, convention development, sport and film. Tourism driver, obviously, we craft that narrative. It comes as no surprise, as you all travel and encounter individuals and you tell them you're from El Paso, sometimes you can see the grimace on their face. And so, I find that as a personal challenge and my life's mission and work, to change that narrative and dispel those myths. And so, obviously, that is one of the main goals of this department. Obviously, there's economic impact. That's how we measure success. And we aim to boost visitor spending in every capacity, whether that's retail tax, hot tax, rental car tax, mixed beverage, et cetera. But that supports local businesses, especially in this area, especially in downtown El Paso. There's a domestic focus, but also an international focus, and we target both drive markets and those fly markets, which are very important to our success. Advertising, so we have a multi-channel marketing, both broad and targeted. I know that sounds very opposite, ends of the spectrum, but broad is obviously important for that branding, that top-of-mind awareness for El Paso. But then targeted campaigns identify those niche markets. And so, we really double down on some of the data that we subscribe to. We heavily invest in things like Datify, which is a dashboard that tells us major feeder markets, how much people are typically spending in the market, and those points of interests. I mentioned that strong digital vertical advertising method. We engage in social and targeted search ads. It's very important if you're searching for outdoor or recreational things, ecotourism, cultural heritage tourism. We want to be able to serve you appropriate ads and things we can deliver on that promise. Our social followers are quite high. We've got about 158,000 followers, but our website view is even more impressive. So, we have about 1.1 unique views to our website each year. So, that's not people returning. Those are unique, one-time visitors. And then earned media, and I'll talk a lot about that a little bit later in the tourism as well, but please note 5.1 million in earned media. The next slide, and I'm not sure if I need to advance it or if IT needs to advance it, it's actually our promotional video, and it's used in a number of different ways. The one-minute, 30-second-long video is primarily used to market the destination, dispel those myths, and provide new imagery and something for people to latch on to. Because when you hear El Paso, many people think desolate border town without infrastructure and things like that. So, by providing them some fresh imagery and compelling video, that helps dispel those myths. I want to point out that this was done, all produced locally, local talent, local videographer, and then, of course, you'll recognize all of the images throughout the video.
IT, we lost the slides on the screens.
You have a joke or anything?
We were on slides seven.
Well, Jose and I are happy to reenact the entire video for your pleasure.
While we're waiting, council, this presentation came out of a discussion I was having with Representative Acevedo, and he asked what were the things we were doing to increase local spending, and as we talked about sales tax. We thought this was a really good way of sort of putting this within context of how we really do those things.
They're working. IT's working on bringing up the video.
Representative Fiero?
Mayor, am I to understand that this is the first time Garcia's been here, it's not leaving with a gift or an award or something?
Yes, Rep Fiero, this would be the first time that you guys didn't leave with a gift or we didn't leave with an award.
There should be a limit on that, Mayor.
We are going to go ahead with the reenactment. Actually, we will. Okay. I'll speak a little bit more about the video, and then they'll pull it up on YouTube, because that is one of the methods by which we promote that video. Another way is I frequently use it, as does the team for convention development and the tourism development team. We use it in bid presentations, but also in attendance boosters. So, it's not only important to put those, that imagery in front of people before they make their decision, it's also important that the year prior to them coming to El Paso, we really hype them up. And so, this video does just that with some fantastic music as well. We can use it in small vignettes. So, if you identify, there's plenty of eating and eateries and different dishes that El Paso is known for, but hiking and different outdoor activities, things, of course, ecotourism is one of our main focuses. So, we can use these in smaller 15-second or 30-second vignettes specifically to talk to a segment. Tourism development. If we could go back to the... IT, would you mind bringing those slides back up, please? Lucky me. I wish this would have happened during Jose's part of the presentation, if I'm being honest. Okay, back to tourism development. We do tour operator outreach, and we do very specific targeting to travel professionals. If you consider the method by which people plan a vacation or travel in Mexico, it's still very focused on travel agencies. So, educating them, providing with them with that imagery, telling them the annual events that there are to see and do here in El Paso, obviously helps them do their job a little bit better. We also just returned from Texas Travel Alliance Annual Meeting, where we helped educate all of the different visitor centers around the state, because that is a primary... all of the different visitor centers around the state, because that is a primary touch point as people come and exit the state. So it's important to make sure that they're armed with all there is to see and do in El Paso. We briefly discussed eco and cultural focus, and we actually have a dedicated position at Visit El Paso for that very reason. Obviously, advertising and promoting those cultural assets is really important. I don't think people realize we have the oldest continuously working missions in the country, and just right here in our own backyard. We travel to national and international trade shows, talking about those very assets, things like Waco tanks and other assets that we can definitely deliver on the promise. We host conferences. So if you think about just in recent years, we hosted the Outdoor Writers Association, we've hosted International Food Bloggers, and then the Society of American Travel Writers. And organizations like that contribute to that 5.1 million dollars in earned media. And so if you think about earned media versus advertising spend, I have a dedicated portion of my budget that goes for advertising, whether it be tourism, convention promotion, film, or any of the other related departments. But that earned media is where we bring in travel writers. They identify what they're focused on, whether it's food and culture, outdoor activities, cultural heritage sites, and they go back and write fantastic stories, and sometimes two or three per visit. And when we track the impact of what those do for our reach, that's where we get that 5.1 million. And that's not just a guess, that is actually, there are formulas that we employ to identify how much value there is. So think about that 5.1 million increasing our reach. We also provide trainings and brochure creation for individuals that don't have the capacity or the budget to do so. Just because a smaller association doesn't have those means, doesn't mean that we shouldn't advertise or promote them as well. So we step in and we act as their advertising agency or their creative team and help them market their association. We also provide tours. We actually just concluded one this Saturday at the conclusion of National Travel and Tourism Week. We took a group out to the Socorro Mission, to Bodega Loya, and to Lincón Derry. So it's important that we also promote those to our own visitors. You can be a visitor in your own city. And then, of course, community collaboration, both with the city and the county, and then those individual associations is critical to our success. The next slide, which I have and you don't, is convention development and sports. Super important, I have to tell you, this is the favorite of my children. This is where I cut my teeth at Visit El Paso, so I spent 10 years in the meetings and conventions segment. Obviously, bringing these meetings and conventions in contributes to economic impact, and we do that a number of ways. We prospect and confirm different meetings, and we have access to databases, and we can identify things that are a good fit for El Paso, and what their minimum meeting requirements, if they align up with what we have available in hotel rooms, in meeting space, or even in off-site adventure. We also increase our involvement with decision-makers at trade shows. I spent a week in Tulsa at the Sports ETA Symposium, which allowed me over 20 one-on-one appointments with individuals that have rights to sporting events. So I met with USA Boxing, and I met with track and field, and I met with pickleball, which we're all very familiar with and is on the rise. And so to bring those tournaments here for weekend stays, obviously increases occupancy, and then of course influences hot. So all very important. A couple of other things that I'd like to mention, we closely work with some departments, city departments, on bringing convention activity, one of which will happen later this year is the code enforcement. I know everyone's super excited about having extra number of code enforcement officers in your community. But also the Texas Retirement Systems, we're working with Carl Remkes currently, as that convention will also happen here. But I do want to commend those individuals that work on the city or even on the county as they come and tell us, I belong to this association and I'd like to bring that association here to El Paso. We all benefit from that increased education and accessibility. And then film and creative industries. We market El Paso as a unique and affordable destination for all types of media production, but post-production is also very important. We have a fantastic resource in Drew Mayer-Oakes. He worked for the State Film Office, but has spent time in San Antonio and Houston, and then of course in Southern New Mexico. So he's very familiar with the assets here, he's very familiar with the state code, and has been championing the bill that sits before the House as far as the funding incentive for film. Also, super important, he's made several trips to Austin to work with his counterparts and colleagues from around the state to really champion what that incentive would do for economic impact in this area. He also cultivates and develops those local assets. We find that when this happens, and I'm going to put it into existence, I'm going to put it in the universe, that we also need to make sure that our local crew is properly prepared and trained. And so Drew hosts a number of different workshops and partners with the state on the accessibility to information and certifications. And then, of course, Drew also manages the film permitting on behalf of the city and works very closely with fire, streets, police, and other departments, lots of departments sign up on that. And then finally, it's worth repeating, as we closed National Travel and Tourism Week this past Saturday, we find that these metrics show that the impact and the efforts that we put forth are returning those dividends. This is the return on investment. 73% is nothing to shake a stick at, that's quite important to note, and we regularly lead state occupancy numbers, and we report on that on a monthly basis to our advisory board. I also wanted to mention that we have a very experienced and dedicated team of marketers working to bring all sorts of visitors and tourism to the community, and we were recently selected as the DMO of the Year for 2024. And then just a week ago, maybe two weeks ago, we graciously received the Gene Phillips Hospitality Award for 2025, something we've never been nominated for or been able to bring home. So I'm very super proud of the team. I've got a number of years, and my colleagues have a number of years of experience, and of course, put that all to good use for the city of El Paso.
Great job, Brooke. So now kind of switching gears a little bit, we're going to talk about El Paso Live. As I said earlier, El Paso Live is what I like to call the facilities and events. We are tasked with managing different facilities throughout the city, primarily downtown. We manage the Convention Center, it's an 80,000-square-foot exhibit hall with some auxiliary space. We manage the Abraham Chavez Theater, adjacent to the Convention Center, that seats 2,500 people. We manage the crown jewel of downtown, the Historic Plaza Theater, that seats 2,100 people. Also downtown, we manage Arts Festival Plaza. It's the plaza between the art museum and the Plaza Theater. It's about 10,600 square feet. And then outside of downtown, we manage the McKelligan Canyon Amphitheater, really, really cool venue. Up in McKelligan Canyon, it seats 1,500 people. Almost 400 events a year combined through all the venues, and then a total of attendance of almost 400,000 folks. So activating these venues is very, very important for us. They also lead to the economic impact for the city of El Paso. Folks do come in to check out the shows, obviously, the Convention Center hand in glove with our efforts with meetings and conventions and bringing out-of-towners to El Paso. Some of the things we do on the event side is the Broadway in El Paso series. We just finished up an incredibly successful season, and we just announced our next season for Broadway in El Paso, Mrs. Doubtfire, The Wiz Six, Clue, Clue on Stage, and then rounding it out with Beauty and the Beast. So really excited about our Broadway in El Paso series. I'm not going to take all the credit for this, because I call it the Hamilton Effect, but when I got here, there was about 1,500 subscribers for Broadway in El Paso. We did Hamilton, and now we average about 2,500 subscribers for Broadway in El Paso, and it's showing in the percentage of tickets that are being sold. And then, of course, we produce our own special events and we do our own festivals. We do that, again, being tasked with activating downtown, of course, lending to the fabric of what our city is. Some of the festivals and events that we do is the Sun City Craft Beer Fest that's coming up. Brooke and her team do the Sun Bowl Fan Fiesta. A new one that we just did, and we're in our third year, is Vivamos México, Celebration of Mexican Independence Day. When we first did it, we didn't know we were going to get 250 people or 2,500 people. We got 6,000 people our first year, following year, 10,000 people, and we're working hard to make it bigger and better. And then, of course, starting this month, in a couple of weeks, El Fresco Fridays Music Series, that's in the Convention Center Plaza. And so I think now we're going to go ahead and play the video, and we got it all queued up. So as Brooke said, that obviously was all produced in El Paso, produced by El Pasoans, all the local talent is El Pasoans, the narrators, El Pasoans. We have four or five different 30-second segments. We share this with Texas Tech, we share this with UTEP, we share this with anybody who wants to use it to help attract whatever it might be, from economic development to student recruitment, whatever it is. We developed this video so that it can be used kind of across the board for, you know, for whoever wants to use it. So with that, it is an honor and a privilege to partner and work with the city of El Paso, Madam City Manager, your staff, Richard Bristol, Ben Five, and then, of course, all the city councilors and mayor. It's a labor of love. As you can see, Brooke has been with us for 18 years, 17, 18 years. Veronica Castro reminded us yesterday that May 16th is Veronica Castro Day, and that's for her long 20-year tenure working at Destination El Paso. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, city reps, we stand for questions.
Yeah, we've got a few questions. I just want to remind the council members that at noon, we have called to the public, and there's been some public sitting here, so Representative Osobedo.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Ms. Mack, for bringing this to Council, and thank you both, it's always great to see you. I will tell you, Jose, that for your first presentation, I think you did better than Brooke.
Dang, Dr. Osobedo.
Dang, we have to get back together, so I'm like Uber.
No, I think that seeing these numbers and what you've been doing with what you have is really impressive. I really can't believe what you're doing with the Convention Center and the state that the Convention Center is in, and I really wanted to give you an opportunity, Brooke, to just kind of give us insight on how you sell El Paso when we are trying to bring conventions that don't fit in the Convention Center.
Happy to do that. I don't like the word "no," I don't take it well, and there's a number of instances where we were told no, and that just wasn't acceptable. And so I don't find myself to be a people person, I don't even like the term, I find myself to be a problem solver. And so if you tell me that space is an issue, I'm going to find you space, and then I'm going to sell you on the idea on why you don't want to be cooped up in just a Convention Center. I want you out exploring the community, experiencing the fabric of downtown, or the airport area, or wherever your meeting may take you. It is a challenge, and I think that if you sell it correctly, many conventions say that they want to be all housed under one roof, sleeping rooms and meeting space, and that's just not a luxury El Paso can afford. And so we talk to them about how it's a benefit to have multiple flags or multiple properties represented. If you follow Marriott Points, or if you're a Hilton Honors person, by coming to downtown El Paso, you can appease all of those different point systems and those requests by your finicky board members or your attendees. As far as the buildings concerned, we sometimes pivot. If you look back to the Texas Society of Architects, it made a lot of sense to put their general session inside one of the theaters. I mean, they're architects, so they totally could appreciate the Historical Plaza Theater or even the unique architecture of the Chavez. And so identifying creative ways. Now, I would like not, I'd like to have more space, and I think that is critical to our success. If you look at some of the other convention centers around the state, they tout a million in exhibit space and a million in breakout, and we, our small but mighty Convention Center is 133,000 square feet all in. So we do have to get quite creative, I appreciate you bringing that up, but I don't find it to be an obstacle that I'm willing to lose business over. In fact, I'll share that we have submitted the national bid for the League of United Latin American Citizens, and our competition is both Philadelphia and Washington DC, and we're going to bring that home.
There you go. That's really great to hear. Thank you. I also, there's a lot of challenges at the Abraham Chavez, it's not ADA, and it's full of asbestos. If you start hitting the wall and trying to renovate it, that's a huge challenge that I think we really kind of need to start having those discussions about that. The last thing that I had was, oh, and the chairs are really uncomfortable at the Abraham Chavez. But I wanted to kind of ask about the water parks, and I know that the water parks have been losing quite a bit of money since they came in. And for my constituents, something that I continue to hear is, they closed our pools, the ones that we could afford, with taking our own food, and it's cost prohibitive for us to visit the water parks. So now we have nothing, and we have crumbling pools in our communities that are just kind of sitting there, there are eyesores at this point. It's been a big priority of mine to try to reopen these Nation Stoban Grand Vitz, for example. So I know that you're managing the water parks, how is that kind of playing a role into getting attendance up, and what are you seeing are some issues with getting more people there?
Well, I'll field the water parks question, and this was primary, this presentation was primarily for visitation and tourism promotion, but the water parks attendance has plateaued, and what we've seen is kind of a been there, done that sort of thing. Last year, Wet n Wild opened up a new attraction, and then, of course, you had the Elmont opening as well. So we continue to promote it as an affordable, accessible, family-friendly attraction. All four of them are spread out through the east side of town, so they are, they're very accessible and they are very affordable. We've put in different initiatives to make it more affordable in that you can bring your own food and beverage to each of the water parks, and we saw that, that resonates well. And so we just continue to marketing it and try and doing different special events, different promotions, things of that sort.
Thank you.
Get you out of here on a high note. Representative Nino?
Jose, Brooke, everyone at Destination El Paso, Visit El Paso, we're so grateful for all the work that you guys do. You guys have such a fun job, and you guys bring so much energy, and you get to highlight really what our city is about. I love that you guys mentioned about like internal tourism, people visiting other parts of El Paso. I became an ambassador like six years ago, and I love that program that you guys had, because it really takes it through the entire history and different quizzes of what our region is and what it brings. So really, you know, members of the public and council, if you guys get the opportunity to do so, it's an easy course online, you get a certificate, you get a PIN that you become an El Paso ambassador. But again, thank you for all your team, because then a part of that, that's when you guys get to invite people to go visit different parts of our region and really, you know, fall in love with the process of falling in love even deeper with El Paso. So thank you for all the great work.
Thank you, Rep. Nino. This is where Brooke steps in and says to have her referral, use her as a referral. And, you know, Rep. Nino, that goes back to America's friendliest city, you know, the ambassador program. It just, the more El Pasoans know about El Paso, and they're intimate with all the different things to see and do in El Paso, makes them better ambassadors and stewards for the city as people are walking around, and you see that every day. You see that every day, if somebody is walking around downtown and they have kind of a confused look on their face, an El Pasoan will walk up to them, say, what are you looking for? face, an El Pasoan will walk up to them, say, "What are you looking for? How can I help you?" And I think that's what's really incredible about who we are as a city, and so thank you for those comments.
Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not trying to put Dionne on the spot, but just, do they have the funnest job at the city?
No, I do.
Okay.
Please don't mistake, we get told no a lot. We just don't accept it. So it is a challenge. We just, we just go back and keep fighting for it.
And if I may, anecdotal story about one of my first experiences with Brooke on the sales, on the sales mission was when we were doing our presentation to the Texas Democrats for their statewide convention. It was us versus San Antonio. And San Antonio went in, did the presentation, they have, "We have a million square feet. We're going to put your entire convention center in this wing, and within two blocks are 30,000 sleeping rooms." Thank you very much for choosing San Antonio. And they left. They literally left the auditorium. And so then Brooke steps up, gives the whole spiel for why they should come to El Paso, and this young man walks up and was like, "We can do everything in San Antonio, super easy. You guys have three meeting rooms." And Brooke literally walks out to the middle of the stage and says, "We don't want you in the convention center. We want you all over El Paso. We want you to experience El Paso." They did the vote. We got 75% of the vote for them to come to El Paso, which they did last year. So that's when she, when she gets a chip on her shoulder, and like she said, "We're a finalist for the League of United Latin American Citizens against Philly and Washington, D.C., you know, we're going to let Brooke loose, and we expect to bring that one home, too."
Yeah. Thank you both. I mean, I want to say that to be in your company is to understand why we're such a friendly city, and I think you embody just the best of us. And it's no doubt that whenever you go out there to pitch El Paso, we know that, you know, we are in good hands because of you. So we appreciate that so much. I also want to thank you because I know that you're attracting tourism, but you're also driving economic growth and revenue to our city, which is invaluable. So we appreciate that. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for coming to the room where it happens.
Representative Brocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So I want to thank both Jose and Brooke. Last week, we, they hosted us at Destination El Paso for our community meeting, and we actually had a very great turnout, I would say. There were about half and half of the business community, which I was very surprised to see, and some constituents from that, from my district. And so I just want to tell you all, thank you so much because you all hosted such a beautiful event for us, and it was state-of-the-art, and I still get comments about the renovations that have taken place. And I would encourage anybody to have your community meetings at Destination El Paso so that they can see the progress, so that they can see the art, they can walk the property. It makes a huge difference to me and to the people that shared that with me last week to be able to see you all in action on your turf. So thank you all so much for all the great work that you do.
Thanks, Representative.
Well, they took all the words, you know. I wouldn't want to go up against Brooke, though. I can tell you that. Yeah. And again, thank you guys for all that you do to promote America's friendliest city, and you do a tremendous job. You've heard it throughout council, and keep doing what you're doing, and we're here to help any way we can. But thank you guys so much for what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Ms. Prime, the call to the public?
Yes, sir. That brings us to call to the public. The El Paso City Council is a local government body charged with serving the citizens, and these meetings must be focused on the meeting at charge. The city council meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Public comment is an accommodation and not a requirement of city council. All persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respectful to other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks, nor may any member of the public use this form for political statements or campaigning. Please note that during call to the public, the city council may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not on the agenda. However, council may propose that a topic brought forth be posted on a future agenda. This afternoon, we have eight members of the public that signed up to speak. The first person is Elizabeth Crawford, followed by Danielle Brissette, Salvador Guerrero, Frank Larios, Ron Como, Claudia Contreras Siller. Ms. Crawford's topic is motherhood or not. Good afternoon, Ms. Crawford. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. It is a blessing to be back in El Paso. I've really been happy to be back. I would like to speak in light of this month as we honor Mother's Day. I'd like to start with a passage in God's Word that's familiar to many people, John 3:16. "For God so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life." Lollipops and brown lunch bags, what do they hold in common? They hold for many fond memories of childhood. Opening a brown lunch bag packed by mom with tender loving care, snacks, sometimes a note of encouragement inside, being given a lollipop as a reward for good behavior or just as a special treat, they are sweet memories of childhood. Standing on the sidewalks outside the abortion centers, both the Planned Parenthood and privately-owned abortion centers in New Jersey and in other parts of our nation, these two objects have been put to sinister use. The brown bag holding inside the abortion pill, the second pill. We work hard to get the word out to young ladies about abortion pill reversal, that though they've already taken the first pill, they don't need to take that second, and that baby, there have been many babies saved by a change of mind. Lollipops given to young ladies having late-term abortions, coming out after day one to return the next day to expel the baby, a lollipop to keep the mom's blood sugar up. It's ugly and it's tragic. I know that many regard Planned Parenthood as a philanthropic organization helping poor women in need. It is not. In New Jersey, I often was on the sidewalk with a lady, Rosie, who ran the pro-life ultrasound van outside the abortion center. Rosie had served for many years in New York, had worked for many years in New York City Planned Parenthood, and we had numerous conversations. One day, she said to me, "The, even the graphic pictures that many people hold outside the abortion centers don't come anywhere close to the nightmare of what goes on at Planned Parenthood." Recently met a young couple in New Jersey on the sidewalk outside Planned Parenthood. I approached the couple. They were going in, young, in their 20s. She didn't want to talk. She hurried past. He wanted to talk. Finally, she turned, and on the verge of tears, said, "I did it last month. I wish I could undo it. I wish you'd been here, out here last month when I was going in. I love kids. I wish I could bring my baby back. I think of my baby every day." We talked about the Lord, about forgiveness that is found in the person and in the work of Christ on the cross. El Paso as a county and as a city has endorsed the Planned Parenthood agenda. Planned Parenthood is not a philanthropic organization.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. You've reached the three minutes. The next speaker is Danielle Brissette.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Danielle Brissette's topic is safety in the McGoffin Historic District.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak with you today. I'd like to address the escalating safety and sanitation issues in the McGoffin Historic District, one of the city's oldest and most culturally significant neighborhoods. It sits just steps from downtown and should be a point of pride for El Paso, and yet it is too often treated as an afterthought in our broader tourism corridor. My name is Danielle Brissette. I was born right here in El Paso and started giving weekend tours at Waco Tanks before I was 10 years old. That's where I first fell in love with El Paso history, a love I've been sharing ever since. Now, I manage an education and history nonprofit in the McGoffin neighborhood. Our work brings 10,000 people a year to this part of town, tourists, schoolchildren, families from every corner of this city and county. We work hard to give them a welcoming, enriching experience, a place where our city's story can come alive. But lately, I worry that the story people walk away with is not one of pride. On April 22nd, two of my staff were threatened by a drug dealer who praised off the homeless individuals in the area. My colleagues were told they would be shot. That wasn't an isolated incident. A few weeks earlier, EPCC fashion students attending an evening rental were chased by a man who jumped the fence and continued to harass these young women, even with staff and uniformed security present. From our front steps, I regularly see open drug use, prostitution, and public defecation. Elderly residents are harassed while walking home. Last week, a tourist asked me why a city worker was scrubbing blood off the sidewalk near the park, and I had no good answer to give. This isn't just uncomfortable, it's unsafe, and it's not fair, not to the residents, not to our visitors, and not to the unhoused people who are suffering without services. This neighborhood needs attention. We need public restrooms to manage the human waste that is now overwhelming. We need trash cans. We don't even have enough to give people the option to do better. We need safe daytime spaces for unhoused individuals when shelters are closed or full, because right now, all they have is the shade of a fence. And, most importantly, we need a continuous police presence at the corner of Myrtle Avenue and Noble Street. And I'm not the only one saying this. I've heard it from teachers, from families, from small business owners, and from elderly residents afraid to leave their homes. Everyone in the district is asking the same question. How bad does it have to get before we take action? The McGoffin District is one of the oldest neighborhoods in El Paso. It's a place where our culture, our architecture, and our values all come together, and it deserves the same investment and support we give other parts of this city.
Thank you, Ms. Brissette. You've reached three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Salvador Guerrero. Salvador Guerrero. Frank Larios. Mr. Larios' topic is safety in the McGoffin District. And IT will need the Elmo, please.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, thank you. Can you see that?
Not yet. I think they're going to go hit a button there, Frank.
Thank you.
There we go.
Oh, great. Yeah. We, I'm going to be speaking about the same subject, the address that Mrs. Danielle was referring to. It's right there on Myrtle and Noble, and that's pretty much the epicenter of everything that is going on. I'm going to come back to this, to this map, and let me just show you what just happened here recently. This was a stabbing that took place on April the 18th, right in the same corner, Noble and Myrtle. And then, let me show you a little bit more here. This is also happening on the 18th. What you see there is people just preparing their drugs. This is right in front of my building, which is right next to that vacant lot on Myrtle and Noble. This is also on April the 18th. This is on Easter weekend. The door right to your left, that's the door to entrance, my apartment building, the tenants couldn't walk out of the building because this guy was unconscious and just laying there. Emeas picked him up, and I don't know what, whatever happened with him. This is, this is yesterday. This is same, same location, Noble and Myrtle. This is what, what these people do when they're there in the area. And this is, again, this is right in front of the, the property, Noble and Myrtle. Let me get back to the, to my map and let me see what, what's happening. What you see there is, I pointed out the properties that I own by the Opportunity Center, which is 1, 2, 3, 4. There is actually a total of 12 properties that is, that the Opportunity Center owns. There are 2 or 3 east of Myrtle, west of Myrtle, and 2 or 3 on McGoffin. Yeah. And the first one, of course, was the big one that was, they got there in 1994. The last one was in 2024. And over the years, the more properties, the bigger they get, the more serious the problem is for us. I believe that one phone call is all it's going to take to fix this. I believe we can do that. And in the meantime, I'm willing, I also spoke with Mr. Canales, and I need to follow up with you on that, and you let me, you let me know when we can proceed with this. I'm willing to purchase the property there on Noble and Myrtle. I'm willing to purchase the property and donate that to the City of El Paso if they can commit to us that they're going to build a substation, a small police substation. That's, that's, I'm willing to do that, and we, I want to get that going as soon as possible. In the meantime, going back to that one phone call, Mr. Johnson, we can get the National Garove here and take care of this immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Larios. Thank you, sir. You've reached the three minutes.
Representative Limon?
Mayor, I would like to speak on this because last week, coming back to the office after lunch, I drove exactly down this street, and I saw the homeless camp that was up there. We have had incredible success by calling that into the 311 and then following with code enforcement. Within one day, they're removed. And so would certainly encourage you to use the 311 app, sir, because that is absolutely unacceptable in any part of our city, and I'm sorry that you and the people in that area have to live under those kinds of conditions.
Thank you. We do that. It won't be, actually, these pictures were taken yesterday around this time. You're exactly right. They went back, and everything is clean right now. It's not going to be, it's not going to be long before they are going to be back right there on the same, on the same street. Yeah. It just keeps going. Yeah. Yeah. They do a pretty good job when they come in and clean, but by tonight, somebody's going to set up their little camp. By tomorrow, there's going to be two, by, before the weekend, it's going to be full again.
And I guess we just need to follow up, because who's going to last longer? You know, they're going to move on eventually if this, if it's cleaned up. And so I'm hoping that something can be resolved.
We've been hoping something changes there, but it is, this is one of my statements also. I know the process works to a point, but we need to be more, more, I don't know, we need to change something a little bit. We need to change something so the result can change. You know, the process, we keep doing the same thing, the result is not going to change. Yeah. And we haven't seen that in 18 years. And actually, it keeps getting worse and worse and worse. Yeah.
Thank you so much. And then I know Code is here in our police department, so maybe they'll come over and continue the conversation. Ms. Prime?
Yes, Mayor. The next speaker is Ron Como. Mr. Como's topic is exercising his constitutional rights for rescue of 1983 and animal services. He will be followed by Claudia Contreras Siller.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm going to bounce around a little today. Speech on public issues occupies the highest rung of the hierarchy of the First Amendment values and is entitled to special protection when animal lives are at stake. Now you know why I keep saying constitutional rights. This is a copy of the task force recommendations for our original no-kill plan. This had to be presented to city council in order to change the shelter plan. Can anybody show me the, one of these for the new plan that's in place? Or did we just violate city policies and procedures? Next thing. I had a conversation with somebody the other day, and they were telling me how some people that you talked to said that the shelter was doing such a great job. I'd like to point out that they don't deal with the community, they don't deal with the strays, they don't trap or catch. I don't know, you know, I'm speaking from the community's end. Speaking of the community's end, I was asked by some community members to ask you all when we were going to start protecting the community and stop protecting His Royal Highness. The community's tired. And just for the record, Riverside, California has sued county, they've sued, the county has the shelter, for violating California laws. They've also been charged by the rescues, they've charged the county, the person who hired the unqualified director, and the unqualified director for wasting taxpayer money. I sent you all the email before the last meeting. They actually refer to El Paso, probably because we have a lot in common. Damn, sorry. Forgot the other one.
Mr. Como, and I'll remind you, please no personal attacks during your comments. No personal attacks, sir.
I didn't personally attack anybody. I didn't name anybody. I was well within my rights. Thank you. Oh, PETA. I sent you all a, an article from PETA. In this article from PETA, they slam El Paso hard over our issues. PETA, a national organization for animal welfare. You all have, if you haven't seen it, or you haven't looked, you have a copy of it. I emailed it to you. I'm sorry, folks, I email you things to help educate you on what's actually happening in the world, and especially in El Paso. We are being pointed at as a disgusting example of animal welfare. When are we gonna fix it?
Thank you, Ron.
The next speaker is Claudia Contreras Siller. Ms. Siller's topic is animal cruelty against cats. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
I am a cat lady, and I'm here to represent the cats and to back the blue. Right now, in their 152 birthday, they have a ceremony for the, a memorial ceremony this Friday, and as leaders, you all should be backing them up 100%. Yeah, this Saturday, they have an event. They're 200 officers short. Animal Services is 330 officers short, and they are the ones taking care of the city. I have some pictures, and we only have two, three minutes. I hope it stays like this, and it's not lower down to two minutes.
IT, we need the elmo, please.
This kitten was locked for I don't know how many days where he lives. They put some rocks. Here you can see his eyes. I liberated him. I went back. They put a lot of sand. The person doing this threatened me with pepper spray. Thank God for the police department, because pepper spray, it's a weapon. The next day, it was covered with cement, and this is going on, and it's going on a lot. I'm just the only cat lady that comes here and talks about it. And I back, I back the blue 100%, and you all have the resources, you have money. The tax property is being used 43% for schools. Some of us don't have kids, so I think that's a little bit too much. 29% is being used for the police, for the fire department, for the zoo, and a lot of other stuff here. Well, I have the icons. And I think the police department deserves more. The animal cruelty deserves more money. Give them more money, and they should be taking the, they, they should be taking the animal cruelty calls 24/7, the entire department. 311 stops taking calls at 11:00, and if, and everything I say here, it's directed to the entire city. I'm sorry if I come a little bit too strong, but like, I'm very tired. They're poisoning cats every day, everywhere. Just look at the next door. And the police department deserves our full support. One time, I was at a gas station, and there was a shooting at a bar, and I told them, there's a shooting there, and they started running towards the bullets, and that's when I started appreciating them more. And they deserve, they deserve more money, and I'll say it in Spanish, "deles más dinero por favor." And please, if you all don't like the cats, well, I'm talking to everybody, you're wrong. People who don't like the cats are wrong, because they're the same value as a dog.
The next speaker is Ms. Patricia Osman. Ms. Osman's topic is transparency, First Amendment, civil rights of citizens, and undue influence of donors and vendors, unelected officials. Ms. Osman, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. I don't see her in the queue. We'll move on to the final speaker, which is Carol Cassidy. Ms. Cassidy's topic is restriction of freedom of speech. Ms. Cassidy, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Carol Cassidy.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, well, greetings, City Council, the manager, and Mayor Johnson. Oh my goodness, you were elected, or EVM selected, to serve the hard-working taxpayers of El Paso City. How dare you attempt to assault our constitutional First Amendment rights, abridging the freedom of speech? Your item number one, to restrict our voices, is a real threat against our constitutional republic. Please, vote no, item one. And voters, wake up here. El Paso City's debt for 2024, oh my gosh, could make us all homeless. It's $3,2559,000, and that's on the Texas Bond Review Board. Take a look. Cut all, for the city and the mayor, cut all your administrators, your bureaucracy. This $3 billion-plus debt means a bankruptcy. My gosh, take a look. President Trump's working desperately to save our nation from the Democrats and Rinos' fiscal destruction of our country. $37 trillion, oh my gosh, it's unsustainable. As is this city's $3 billion-plus added to the other four taxing entities on our CAD statement. And God bless the CAD, they're doing their job, but the, but the taxing entities are out of control here. So quick dis, dis, disrespecting we, the people. Please, do what's right. Fiscal responsibility. We need a dose here. There is a dose, I believe, being set up, I hope, with the Texas Legislature. They're kind of out of control, of course. Anyway, and I'm, I'm bidding you to do fiscal responsibility, in the name of Jesus. And I wanna say thank you to that beautiful cat lady. Oh my gosh, my husband and I have rescued now seven cats, and they live in our own. Oh my gosh, we can't take anymore in, but anyway, and my name is Carol Cassidy, and I'm a Texas and El Paso proud citizen here, prayer warrior. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Prime?
That concludes call to the public this afternoon.
All right, let's take item 32.
Yes, sir. We're on page 14. Items 32 and 33 are related, if I may read them both.
Sure.
Thank you. Item 32 is a ordinance changing the zoning from RF 5 Residential to AO Apartment Office at 1814 and 1818 Arizona Avenue. Item 33 is a public hearing of a ordinance granting a special permit to allow for infill development with 50% parking reduction, also at 1814 and 1818 Arizona Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in the second? Discussion, Representative Canales?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to the Guillermo family. You know, they, this, this took quite a while to get this arranged for them, and, and they went through some difficulty dealing with, with this property, so thanks for their patience, and I'm glad that this resolved.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate Mayor Pro Tem Fierro, and this is to adopt the ordinances on items 32 and 33. There's no public comment on that motion. Call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take 34.
Yes, sir. Item 34 is a public hearing of a ordinance granting a special permit to allow for infill development with reductions to average lot width, front, rear, and side yard setbacks, and 100% parking reduction. This is at 903 Park Street.
Move to approve.
All right. There's a motion in the second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate Mayor Pro Tem Fierro, to adopt the ordinance on item 34. There's no public comment on that motion. Call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's take 35.
Item 35 is a public hearing of a ordinance changing the zoning from RF.
If we could take 35 and 36 together, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item 35 is a public hearing of a ordinance changing the zoning from RF Ranch and Farm to RF 4 Residential and imposing a condition at 8,700 Palway. Item 36 is a public hearing of a ordinance changing the zoning for parcel one from RF Ranch and Farm to C1 Commercial, and parcel two from RF Ranch and Farm to C2 Commercial and imposing conditions. This is northwest of Saragossa Road and west of North Loop Drive.
Mayor, make a motion to approve items number 35 and 36 on the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limon, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, and this is to adopt the ordinances on items 35 and 36. There's no public comment on that motion. Call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take 37.
Item 37 is a public hearing of a ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Rio Grande Waste Services, Inc., to operate and maintain a solid waste collection and hauler service within the city of El Paso.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion in the second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by alternate Mayor Pro Tem Fierro, seconded by Representative Trejo, and this is to adopt the ordinance on item 37. There's no public comment on that motion. Call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's take 38.
Item 38 is discussion in action on a resolution that the city manager or designee be authorized to effectuate the listed budget transfer to add funds from renovations master project into Fire Station 16 renovations sub-project in accordance with updated project scope and expenditure needs, the funding source is Public Safety Bond.
There's a, there's a motion in the second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limon, seconded by alternate Mayor Pro Tem Fierro, to approve item 38. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Let's take 39.
Item 39 is discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the submission of, of an application to the Office of Congresswoman Veronica Escobar, requesting an appropriation from the Community Project Funding Program in an amount of $5 million, with the federal government contributing $4 million and a $1 million match from the city for the Segundo Barrio Safe Streets project.
Is there a motion on this one?
Move to approve.
Motion in the second. Discussion, Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to give a thank you to staff who packaged, packaged this quite quickly. This is a project that's been around on our books for a while, in different forms. It's been pretty fraught with, with different problems with the funding sources and whatnot, so I'm grateful that we're able to include this in the community project funding requests this year. I think it's a very worthwhile one. Again, we, we've completed one tiny segment, and it's not exactly this project, it's immediately adjacent, the, on Campbell Street. It looks excellent, and so the community's really excited about the possibility of replicating that throughout the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on item number 39? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Prime, call for this vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by Representative Limon, and this is to approve the resolution on item 39. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take item number 40.
Yes, sir. The final item is number 40, and this is discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the submission of, an application to the Office of Congresswoman Veronica Escobar, requesting an appropriation from the Community Project Funding Program in the amount of $5 million, with the federal government contributing $4 million and a $750,000 match from the city, and $250,000 match from the DEC Plaza Foundation for the I-10 DEC Plaza Project.
Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I don't think that this one is news. Applying for these federal funds was part of the, the potential strategy that was discussed when, when staff spoke to, to the council about all of the potential funding sources. And again, I, I've been very consistent in saying that I, I'm happy to support this as long as we're aiming for state and federal funds for, for this project. This is a, a good opportunity to take a chunk, albeit a small chunk, out of the, the price tag of this project and, and, you know, receive support in partnership with, with the federal government, so happy to support it today.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Prime, please call for this vote.
We have public comment on this item.
Number 40, we do.
We have Bruno Vazquez. Mr. Vazquez, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Bruno Vazquez, star six, please. Good afternoon. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Good, good afternoon, City Council, Mayor, fellow citizens. My name is Bruno Vazquez. I am a local architect. Can anybody?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that. Okay, here we go. So my name is Bruno Vazquez. I am a local architect, proud member of the American Institute of Architects here in El Paso. A couple of weeks ago, my colleagues and I had an opportunity to present our support for the DEC Plaza Project in El Paso, and we want to reiterate our support. We also want to expand a helping hand. We have been reaching out to various organizations, not just the city of El Paso, but also the community foundation, in an effort to provide and lend our expertise pro bono, because not just as architects, but also as residents of the city, we want to see this project move forward. We want to make sure that our membership is able to provide help in organizing community meetings, and providing technical support to help answer a lot of the questions that community members, neighborhood associations, other private industry, and, and, and anybody else interested in this project may have. We want to do it because we see this as a great opportunity for our city. We, we often hear some of the concerns that some of our fellow El Pasoans share about this project, that, things like, we are not Dallas, we are not Phoenix, and, and you're right. In fact, I would emphatically say, thank God for that. We are El Chico, and we can make this project our own, just like we have made a lot of our other cultural assets our own. Architecture plays a big role in the way that culture develops, but it also plays a big role in how an economy develops. We see this as a great opportunity, and again, just want to reiterate the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects to support and provide a lending hand to this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Eddie Chavez.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, City Council members. I know most of you, not all of you, but anyways, you know who I am, and I, I came out here because I saw this, another carrot for the city to spend more money. Once they see money from the government, they wanna make, they wanna join in. We, we should have learned our lesson when we did our, another White House one, which was the, the trolley. It was supposed to be a big thing, and supposed to bring so many people and everything, and look at it. We're paying for it, and it's going down. As a matter of fact, I think we still owe $91 million to the state, because that money was used by Lily. Not Lily, I'm sorry. Nylon, I'm sorry. I know you were fighting against her all the time, so. It was a good entertainment when I used to come to the city council meetings. Poor, poor leisure, leisure ma, mayor, leisure, he had to be referee all the time. Anyways, I know her from, we come from La Chiva Huita, so we're, we're cousins. We call each other cousins. But anyways, I'm against this, because this money could be used for something else. Plus, now we got the arena that's gonna come out in northeast. I think it's gonna be competing against this. out in northeast. I think it's gonna be competing against this event. So I was hoping that the city council would think it twice and spend this money, even though they're gonna get money from the government. But it's a carrot, you know? You guys, you see it, and you get drawn into this thing. I'm just a little taxpayer from a high school education, but I tell you one thing, I've done more as a neighborhood association than a lot of you guys up there. So I can't wait to finish my book, so you guys can see all this thing that's going on. But you guys, I, I want to commend you, though, that I finally see something human in the city council. You're finally thinking about the, the people that come up here to try to talk, and to come out here and encourage them to come out. I do it everywhere I go. Thank you so much for all your jobs. God bless you all.
All right, thank you so much. Ms. Prime, call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate mayor Pro Tem Fierro. This is to approve item 40. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right. We have, we have a motion in the second to adjourn. Ms. Prime?
Yes, sir. There's a motion in the second to adjourn the city council meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, is adjourned at 12:46 PM. Thank you, council.